Okay, good evening. This is the Board of Selectors meeting on October 14th, 6:00. Tonight we're dealing with budget and we're doing the Parks and Recreational budget, all the different sections.
Dave, could I ask one question of the board before we start? I was wondering if it would be possible to move Item L, the Community Center discussion for tomorrow night, up the agenda to either before or after the Libby trustee meeting, just under the anticipation that there may be some older folks that come to the meeting and it would be tough for them to sit from 6:30 till maybe 9:30 for that agenda item.
Well, I don't have the schedule here, so I think we'll have to do that tomorrow night. You'll have to bring it up.
Well, it doesn't give the people much time to know that the position is going, time's going to change. That would be my only concern.
I'd like to see the Parks and Rec bring the Community Center up under their agenda tonight.
Oh, they will be.
It is.
We're not going to ignore them.
This is tomorrow night.
Okay.
All set to go, Dave?
Yep.
Okay, so in front of you, you have a spreadsheet that was asked for me to produce. I produced it, gave it to the full board. That lays out all of the Parks and Recreation departments minus the Pop Whalen Arena. It takes 23 actuals, 24 actuals, 25 approved, 26 proposed, and it gives a percentage 23 to 24, 24 to 25, and 25 to 26. Your first budget that you'll be looking at is Parks Administration. The Parks Administration budget for 2026 is proposed $323,641. That's an increase of $201, or 16.7% over 2025. Couple of things about this budget that I would remind you about. In the fall of 2022, we transitioned a part-time employee in that department to full-time. And then in the fall of 2023, we transitioned a programmer to full-time in that. So that department now is made up of four full-time employees, two of them based on collective bargaining agreements, and two of them are salaried employees. I believe it was two years ago now when we came in front of you, we performed a wage adjustment for the Assistant Director and the Director based on the hiring of a Director of Pop Whalen and Abenaki. Since that time has transpired. We revisited that with the staff member leaving, and we have hired a Director of Pop Whalen, Ice and Art Center. He is dealing with a couple of programs this evening, but he will be here tonight. So that's why he's last on the agenda. And we've assigned Bo, who's sitting here this evening, to overseeing Abenaki and being the liaison over there. It seems to be working out well at this point. And Christine is here to be able to answer specifics regarding the budgets. Do you have questions for them, or would you like to get into the series?
Yeah, I'll go off on the 100 series.
Christine, what did you not account for? You had 121, $977,000, and Jim moved it to 161. Did you not account for somebody, or what's the difference between those two? The number you gave was the budget for, that you have from the default.
So, in my experience with the budget, we never touch the full-time page. It usually is the Finance Director, so I actually didn't edit any of that. So it was just...
Just carry over.
Yeah, the only pages I touch are ones that have part-time wages. But the full-time, because it is with the union, it's something that they actually handle. So it was submitted with them just having to touch it. I didn't touch anything there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
100 series.
We're on Parks Administration, right?
Correct. 500 series.
Yeah, I have a question on 500. Spring, summer, is the winter brochure not happening anymore? I only see spring and summer.
Yeah, so we've actually pushed our brochure a little bit out, so we encumber everything in one brochure versus doing two different ones. So that actually should say, we can fix that to have winter, summer brochure.
So does that explain, if I could, does that explain the precipitous reduction?
Yes.
So you've consolidated brochures?
Yes.
And as a result of that, you've cut that expense by 44%, 7.4%.
We did that, plus we changed the program that we're using for the brochure, so we didn't need the in-design that we were using, which was a program that we were using, but we're using Canva instead, I believe. So it saved us some money as well.
And all these brochures are in hard copy and online, right?
Correct, yeah. And we've done, kudos to my staff for doing a great marketing job. I think that we've really been trying to do a lot more posters and trying to hit up any bulletin boards we can, and a lot of the stuff is already online. But we still have those people who want that paper copy. And because we are a town that people are coming in for a visit and then leaving, it's nice to have something to grab and go. We did find over the years, the winter one, we've had a lot of extra, and so that's why we kind of compiled it together with kind of pushing people to the website that has all the information, but you still have something to have in your hand. So there's some things, like the Progressive Ski Dinner, we typically know when that is, and some of it will just say save the date and then have that website for them to go to to get that information.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the other thing I would bring to your attention, if you look at line 562, the rec desk software has been moved into the IT budget. That's one of those things we've been trying to accomplish for a couple of years now. So that has been moved into the IT budget, and that makes up a large percentage of the reduction in this budget as well.
And we're going to get that spreadsheet that tells us where things went and how the...
Sam and I met on it the following day, and we're working up, building out a spreadsheet as to what that'll look like.
Thank you.
Before we get to line 560, back on 550, can you count, or do you count, page views for what's coming into Parks and Rec? I mean, do you look at how many times you're getting hits?
I didn't hear you. Do I count what? I didn't hear...
Page views. How many times someone has gone www.townofwolmbro.com, I want to see a brochure from Parks and Rec, and then you get a page view. Is the new website, do you know, Jim, capable of giving page views?
I believe it is.
That wasn't meant to be a trick question?
I believe it is. I don't know.
I think it can tell you how many visits. I'm not sure for the specific page.
That would be a page.
I think Amy might have access if it does have that, but...
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess Paul's, not question, but remark is so that you'll be able to see how many people see your brochure online and how many people get it in a printed copy based on how many copies you print out, and it'll give you an idea of where it's best to get that in people's hands.
Yeah, that, but also, you know, it's the utility of the message, right? I mean, some people do, as some of us do, we want to have something in the front seat of the car.
Right.
So that when we come up on the weekend, we can go, ah, this is where I want to go. But there's also this utility of people using the web to search, and then you can figure out where they're searching from and all that kind of fun stuff. So you can, it's twofold, Brian. I agree with your point, but it's twofold. Some people like this, some people like to look at the weather.
So how many brochures do you have left over at the end of the year?
We actually had probably 10 this year after doing it.
10?
Yeah, like when we collected them. The last time when we did our winter one, we had, they come in stacks of 50, and we had quite a few. So I think the difference is, in the summer, everyone's spread out, and in the winter, they're all at one location, right? So, and most people are coming for, you know, either skiing or skating versus all those other versatile things in the summer. So that's why we kind of scaled back, because we figured it wasn't really getting out there. We make sure that the Chamber has it, Library, Town Hall, and then we do the same thing for Tufton Borough, and then we make sure most of our programs have them.
Does a place like the Nordic Skier get your brochures?
Oh, I don't know if we've ever done that. That's a good idea, though.
It's a message for the Abenaki team, right?
Go ahead, Linda.
Yeah, they do a lot of posting on Facebook. You do an excellent job. So that's another way you're hitting them that you didn't, you know, you don't need the papers much.
Right. We were finding a lot of people go away from paper, so I don't know if you noticed around town, we started doing signs with QR codes, so it brings them right to whatever the event is. So we're trying to do more of that, because it is a different age where most people have a cellphone and they don't want a piece of paper, but you still have people who like paper. Sometimes I'm one of those people.
But in an analogous way, do you, are you able to know how many times somebody lights up a QR code? Do you have any analytics on how many times people are going to a Facebook place and looking at your stuff?
We can access that through our website.
That would be nice, you know, over, you know, this isn't going to affect this conversation, maybe not, maybe, but it'd be nice over time to know where we're getting visibility into the offerings we have. We know that people will pick up a brochure, put it in the car, or promptly use some other vehicle to get rid of it. So you can't really say, I published 10,000 brochures and 9,200 were used. But you could say somebody loitered on a website or hung around on a Facebook page for a couple of minutes, and you kind of got a sense that they're interested in what they're doing.
Right.
Thank you. Why the reduction, if I could, why 560? Can we go there, Jim?
Yeah, so that reduction is moving the rec desk software over to the IT budget.
So aside from that, everything else is status quo? Is that right?
Yeah, because rec desk is 5,800. I looked that up.
You did?
Yeah, 5,800 was the cost of the rec desk.
So they actually, 57.05. Okay, thanks. Okay, so it's a flat year-over-year for dues and subscriptions? Nobody's raising prices for dues and subscriptions?
Uh, no, not for that.
600 series.
And again, the big driver of the reduction, just like I said, on 600 series is your less gasoline?
Yes, that one in particular is for our van. That's only for the van, not for the maintenance vehicles, and I think there was a reduction in the rate. That's why that went down.
So you, Jimmy, you pass out the rate, right, for gas?
Yeah, there was a, there was a sheet that we got. I asked for it.
Correct. So the gasoline is actually adjusted monthly.
Yep.
So in November, when we do the report for the Budget Committee, we'll go through and see if there's any substantial change in the fuel and make those appropriate adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
700 series.
What is it that you need to purchase in the furniture? I noticed that you only used about 171 in 2024, and I think go back. Do you have specific things that you are planning to purchase?
Sometimes chairs need to be changed and stuff like that. That one, we're looking in particular for another bulletin board to put out for some of our stuff over down in the Foss Field area, over by the tennis courts.
So the bulletin board down in the Dockside area has been kind of neglected over the years. Are we, are we going to do anything down there?
Yeah, I had a, that's not actually mine, but I had a conversation with Amy about it, because I had gone down to that area to check out, like if you got off the boat, what you would see, and we noticed there wasn't a lot of marketing material down there. So I'm working with Amy to figure out, because we were thinking where it's located now is not the best location in the sense of, we think a lot of snow is being pushed up against it in the winter. So we're trying to figure out, do we put it closer to the other side near Cape Park to put something over there? But we're still trying to figure out exactly what that looks like. It might be more of a checking out winter to see where the snow is being pushed, to see where the best option is, so it's something that can stay up year-round.
Is this still falling apart?
It has been falling apart for a number of years.
Yeah, I mean, I need to work with what I did. I kind of went down there and put some permanent stuff down there. I need to go check it out, actually. So there is no case on it, but luckily, nobody has been touching the stuff we put up there, but it definitely needs to be upgraded.
It's not very professional, is it?
Mm-mm.
So if it's not yours...
Yeah, I don't know...
Whose is it? It's not Amy's. I don't think Amy...
I think it, wasn't the planning department put those up?
I think it was with Matt Sullivan.
Actually, that was with Rob before.
Oh, Rob, okay.
I'm with you. Rob Hausman put those up.
Yeah, because I asked the question, because I actually went along Bridge Falls path, and there's one up there, down there, that I updated as well. There's one by the Chamber, and then that was the last one over there. So we do need to fix it or get a new one, but I'm not sure if that should, it most likely will be a spring project, because like I said, we have to look at the winter to see where the best spot to put it is.
A couple of people came to me this summer and showed me Meredith's sign. It gives information about everything and where it could go, and I sent it to Amy this summer, and she thought it was very, very nice-looking also.
Okay.
So I don't know...
Oh, I think I did see that, yeah.
Yeah, so that, so I was on that this summer, thinking that maybe we needed to update something. And I had someone text me, they said that our go-to meeting is not working, Jim.
We have not been using go-to meetings. It's not advertised.
Okay.
That might explain why it's not working. That might explain why. Just a, just a little on this point. Those signs don't have a, nobody really cares who owns the sign in the consuming public. The fact that the sign looks like poo is a message. I'm not directing that at you. I'm directing that at us. A non-operating function, which I think planning is, it doesn't operate, you know, it plans, probably needs to get out of the sign business. And, you know, I'd like to see, you know, kind of a, hey, we got those signs from now on speech from somebody. I can't direct that, but it just seems to me that that's like one of those things that we could, we've always done it that way, just fix it.
I think we haven't done it. That's the problem, and I think somebody needs...
We've never done it. We've never done it.
I think we were trying to put maps out of where you are. I think those were directionals. That's where it came out of planning, but I think if we say to Jim, can you give this project signage in those areas to one of your staff?
I think Brian made a point. He says, we've never done it anyway, so, and John makes a good point. It's a messaging thing. Someone looks at that and goes, ooh. So it would be great to just like grab a hold of that and say that, we got it, whoever it is that we is. And I don't, I don't think I want to ask a non-operating function of the town to pick it up.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure if Amy forwarded that to the whole board, but if you wanted to forward that Meredith sign to the whole board, just to give us an idea, to look at it, and we can make it different, the same, a little of the same, whatever we want, of course.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to Parks Maintenance. So Parks Maintenance, proposed budget, $325,237, an increase of $34,848, or 12% over 2025. This department has four full-time employees and a number of part-time employees, correct?
Yes.
And they take care of everything from cemeteries to the bulk of our parks in town, and they've been getting into dealing with some trees and taking care of the Bridge Falls path. They've, over the past couple of years, have done a lot of work down there relative to putting down fresher stone dust, trying to keep that more contemporary. Christine will be able to answer questions you have about this budget as we get into it. 100 series.
I have a question. It looks to me that Scott is, no, is it Scott? No, it's Calvin is part-time. It says 50%. So it looks like three and a half. That's what it has, a 50%.
Yeah, so he's shared with Pop Whalen.
Okay, so...
His wages are broken out between Pop Whalen and Parks Maintenance.
Yeah, so this department has three and a half staff.
Correct.
Okay. Good news.
And what is, does it have overtime? What is overtime used for?
Typically, overtime is used if we have a race for the week, so if we do our Turkey Trot or Granite Man, something like that. It's also used mostly in the winter when we have snowstorms, so we have to go out and we have a root that we plow for our facilities, and then we need to make sure that Pop Whalen and Abenaki people are able to get to them as well.
So to Linda's question, so on the overtime, setting aside the weather, these are weekend events? So it could be the Granite Man?
Could be weekend events, sometimes if it's a, yeah, you said not including snowstorms, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So what are we doing this year for snow falling off the roof at the pop?
We're going to shovel it.
Do we have a, do we have a tractor this year?
We don't have a tractor. We've been working closely with Highway, and they are able to let us use their equipment when necessary. So we do have a snow blower, so we try to snow blow, but if we keep an eye on it, so if it's a serious storm, we try to work with Highway and they try to assist us.
So last year, there was a event, and there was a bunch of cars that had to park on 109. It was a ski event, a hockey event, and...
They didn't have to park on 109. They chose to park on 109. We were shuttling vehicles, and they didn't want to park at the shuttle location and made an executive decision to park on the road.
That's, that's what I was looking to clarify. So, so I think this spring, I came to you and I said, how do we create a unified message board where the skiers, the Parks and Rec, the pop, all can go to one site on the town's website to get information instead of going to Facebook, Friends of the Abenaki, so that everybody can be unified with one spot where everybody knows what's going on? Where are we with that?
You mean for parking purposes?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about information on the town's website, because that's really, that's really what we want. We want, we want the town to have one website instead of people having to go to Facebook to find out stuff, and then, you know, things get tossed back and forth, and the message isn't from the town at that point. So what I'm trying to say is, are we, are we working with the web provider on our town's website to create a unified message for the Abenaki Ski, the pop, and all the groups that use that facility?
Yes, I believe we are. We just, as you know, started a new website, so we're in the process of still finagling and making it all work, but I think we are pushing people to that to get the information. I got to be honest, some people aren't going to look on a website to get information, so it's also communicating it to the users. So Bo is in charge of Abenaki, and just when they do have a ski race, making sure all those people who are in the ski race have that information to know, we do have a shuttle, so you'll have to park accordingly, so...
So it's, the reason that I bring it up is because I don't want people to be disingenuous to the Parks and Rec program, because we've created a site that they can go to. If they don't wish to go to that site and they miss out on the information, that's on them.
Right.
I, Dave, can I speak? I have a, just a, maybe a different twist on your thought, John. I think that the people with different age groups are going to, are going to message themselves in the ways they find convenient. Some people will use this, some people will use a piece of paper, whatever. The issue, I think, that you're raising, John raised, is we've got to make sure there's one version of the truth, right? There's one version of the truth, and anything is, everything is derivative from that. That's the, that's the challenge. So if somebody wants to put up a Facebook post, they ought to darn well be referencing to one version of the truth. That's the way it happens. I mean, people, people visit, visit New Hampshire, visit NH, and that's a great source of information about what's going on in towns. Some people may visit what's, you know, the Wolfboro community groups. That's a great source of information. As long as it's not managed, the information doesn't change from the one version of the truth. I'm okay with where it is. It should be branded to the Parks and Rec function, and I'd go from there, but you, I mean, the burden you face is make sure everything that you want to portray to the public is one place, and people can derive things from that. That's okay. I'm fine, you know, I'd be fine with that.
And I think sometimes what people don't understand is they'll go to Google for information, but the problem with Google is anytime something has been put on the web, if you Google it, something could come up, but it could be from 2023. Because I'm like, where did you see that? And I try to correct information, and there's no post there again, so...
So that then says anything, especially like a document that gets passed out at any given point in time, has a date on it.
Yep.
Everything we do should have a date on it.
Correct.
That way you can control versions.
So, back to the roof.
Back to the roof.
I know that we do have to make sure that we follow any warranty that we have on the roof, but there is a way that we could put snow stops and a heated line that is made to be mounted on steel roofs. The snow would stop at the bottom, the heated line would melt the snow on the bottom, so water drips off, more snow would slide down, get caught, and it just keeps on happening. I know there'd be an expense with that, but that's a fix that could be done.
We have that. It's $18,000 to do this fix. We have that.
Which is cheaper than a tractor.
But I...
So...
I didn't put in for a tractor.
I know, I know.
I think, I think the track, what you're saying about the tractor is a mixed message, because the vehicle with the tractor was, it was a Four Seasons piece of equipment, and it can save people's bodies from breaking, which eventually would cost the town more in downtime and so forth, and it can go to the beaches, it can pick stuff up. There's a lot more benefit to the tractor for the Parks and Rec than just being able to pick snow up that falls off the roof.
Except the message didn't get to the voters, and the voters voted no.
300 series.
Just a, just a question on the, on 341.
I guess I just yellowed.
So, we are, I believe, entitled to complimentary services from broadband, from Breeze Line. We went through the list last year and kicked some of those things off because they were so, you know, they were... so, you know, they were left in disconnected things. Now, this has been moved over to Sam. I'm not gonna poke at it, but is this broadband internet line, does it have television service on it? Or is it just a pipe? It's a pipe. All right? You're not watching TV. You're not getting Channel Nine or any of that stuff.
No.
So this may, and maybe Sam can grab this one, this may be a complimentary service out of Breeze Line. As long as it doesn't have TV service on it, because, you know, Tom's got TV service running into fire departments.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that this is internet, but we will confirm.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I have three eighty. Pesticide and fertilizer application at Cape Park? And what do you use for fertilizer? Because I don't think you're allowed to fertilize that close to the lake. I think the only thing you can use is lime, and I'd like that checked.
Well, I think, I don't believe that they're fertilizing within the twenty-five-foot area. There's the, there's the brick area, and then there's the front area, and you, you are able to use an amendment when you do treat areas, as long as they're not a synthetic. There are amendments out there, and...
Then I would like that information.
I, I think the Wolfborough...
I have a word, pesticide.
Yeah, there's an interest there.
I will check it out.
Pesticide and fertilizer, and I'd just like to know the information on that.
But I think that Cape Park was for the pruning and landscaping. The fertilizer and application is not just for Cape Park, it's for Foss Field as well. So I'll check that out for you.
Would you?
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking for.
Good, good catch.
Yeah, it's good, it's good to find the, if we have to fertilize, the safest thing possible. If we can avoid it, then that's even better.
All right, get the information.
Yep, she said she would.
Well, I, back to what I was trying to say, was there are natural amendments, and to rush to judgment for fertilizing in front of the water at Cape Park may not be the case. So, let's, let's not rush to judgment there.
Well, that's why we're asking for information.
That's why I asked for information.
It's not rushing, it's asking for information.
Here with that. Four hundred series?
Why the big jump in vehicle maintenance?
Because we keep going over, because there's actually three vehicles that we are maintaining. We had to go back to that 2023 budget where we only had the minimal amount, and I put five hundred for each vehicle.
It doesn't seem like much.
They were all new vehicles. So it's basically if they need new tires and any things that they need. I don't know where we're at for this.
Tires, brakes, oil changes.
It just doesn't seem like much. That, that's my point. You've got three vehicles, five hundred bucks, we're seeing, in comes the PD and the, and the fire department, I mean, they're talking a couple of grand per vehicle. I know you guys aren't out chasing bad people, but five hundred bucks, that, that would buy you a tire and an oil change. I'm just, if you think that's the right number, fine, but it just seems low for three vehicles.
Jim, you cut four thirty-five by two thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars. What was cut out of there?
Yeah.
Building maintenance?
I believe that we had some conversations about some building repairs and trying to get those performed before the end of the year. That's why those cuts for 2026's budget were made.
So you guys know what those are? Christine?
I'm trying to look for my...
She's looking. That would be nice if you could get them into the twenty-five budget.
Well, I thought we had the issue with the health insurance, so...
We do, but I made this directive to Christine previous to...
That.
That. This was early September when we sat, sat down and discussed budgets.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure it was the building maintenance to get some of those repairs done this year.
Prior to you freezing things?
I'll take that as an answer, but if you find that that's not true, you wanna come back, you know?
Or a little information, which, which things you're doing this year instead of next year would be nice.
Six hundred series?
Again, on the custodial supplies and the, and those kinds of things, I accept what you have, but I, you know, the other night, we saw other buildings that had custodial supplies and things, and if you try to do a, I don't know how you do it, supplies per square foot, or supplies per building size, I, I'm having trouble with a, trying to come up with a rubric, and maybe there isn't any, but a lot of toilet paper gets bought for these, but I just, I just don't, I can't find a method. I'm not poking at you, I just can't find a method as to why you're spending nine hundred and thirty dollars less next year than you did this year for toilet, for custodial supply. I, I just, I can't figure it out.
I would assume some of that is because, don't you have outside services that are doing some of your cleaning now?
This is a maintenance building.
Yeah, but still, he's talking about toilet paper, and he's talking about cleaning supplies and stuff like that. So if, if they're using outside services, they wouldn't need to buy the supplies to...
But it's, but it's in the budget.
Yeah.
That's my point.
It's a maintenance building. It's a, I don't think you have, it's different than when you got a whole bunch of people using it.
Like, yeah, if you had like a bathroom.
Yes.
Public.
Public. It's no public access.
I don't wanna go there.
So, so could it, could it be to the, the building of the building?
I'm sorry?
Could it be because the building was being built, and they were using facilities up there?
So this is for custodial supplies for the maintenance building and for the pavilion.
So I wasn't wrong.
Yeah.
No one suggested you were.
And the pavilion? Yeah.
Being as a separate...
You might have been misinformed.
No, the pavilion, yeah. If we look at the actuals, what was going on, this was too high. This is for the maintenance building. We didn't need that much. We're not going to the bathroom that much up there, so that's why.
So then you are wrong.
Every budget has their own toilet paper lines. That's why this was cut down. Okay. God, you guys want me to have more money over here or what?
Hey, you know, we're just trying to help you out, Christine, anyway.
I don't know what he's doing.
When do we get to the big numbers?
That's right. We'd like the little...
When do we get to the big?
Seven hundred series?
Getting another couple of backpack leaf blowers, huh?
And that line seven forty, as you can see, is the same as what was asked for last year. A lot of it was removed because of the default budget.
Okay. So, for clarity, Jim, so the subtotal line is back in, and it was there last year? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that. So you asked for two backpack leaf blowers last year, and you didn't get them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That answers that question.
Okay, moving along to beaches. So beaches, 2026 proposed budget, one hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, a decrease of twenty-one thousand, seven dollars, or sixteen point seven percent. This is mostly all labor. We have made cuts here the past two years with the default budget. We have been able to operate, and Christine came in with this number for this year, and she'll be able to answer questions that you have relative to it as we move through. One hundred series?
I've got a question. Actually, used to date is only fifty thousand?
Right.
So, are you expecting to have more hours next year, or is that just...
So the reason why that was is, at the beginning, because we were in a default budget, I was cut drastically in some beach wages and program wages. So this is actually what it should be. I actually did rework these numbers. I think originally when we had chatted, we were trying to have the beaches open from Memorial Day to Labor Day. It's proven very difficult with the staff that we get, because most people are in school, and they're moving up here for the summer. And in all realisticness, the beaches are really busy the end of June, middle of August, and that's really when I have my core staff. And so I reworked it to do it during that timeframe, to have staff during that timeframe. We did remove the swim coach and the swim team, because, you know, I did request more money for that. We're still coming to grips with creating our swim program after COVID, and we just didn't have the numbers that we needed for swim team. But in this, for the lifeguards, I did up the numbers a little bit. So if we have enough participants, some of those lifeguards can be used as a swim coach to offer that program. I did remove the dues for the swim team from the budget, but it will something, it will be something that will run through the revolving program. So if they wanna participate and do that, then we will run it through the revolving, so it doesn't hit the budget, because it's a specialty program. But in the previous year, when we stopped doing it, the past two years, we only had two to three participants. I did hear a lot of asks for it last year. My only concern is, I'm not sure all my staff are coming back. So it really depends on how many guards we have in order to make that happen. But I did have that flexibility, that if we have the guards, then we have the people, we will be able to run the swim team.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that. Before we go further, could, could you speak about guards at different beaches?
So typically, we have lifeguards at Brewster Beach only. When we have day camp, where they go to Cary Beach, we will have a lifeguard on duty. But we have gone away from lifeguards just because it is difficult to get them, especially in this area. We're finding a lot of rec departments have the same problem, because we don't have a pool per se for the training purposes, and so it's hard for people to get into a class, is really what it boils down to. So we repurposed the lifeguards at the other two beaches as gate attendants, beachkeepers. And so we did feel that you do need a presence of a staff member on the beach during these busy months. So it's to have someone rake the beaches, clean the bathrooms, make sure toilets aren't getting clogged, and just take care of the area and help the patrons. So that's why we have beach attendants at Cary and Albee Beach, and Brewster has the lifeguards, because with Brewster, and it isn't our beach, it's Brewster Beach that we lease for a dollar, part of the requirements is to have lifeguards. And so we try to man that beach. Also, that is the same beach that we have our swim lessons at, so having lifeguards is a...
Just on an anecdotal basis, did you find during the year that Albee and Cary, you know, on an average week was maxed out? Did you find it, no?
I don't think so. I think we've seen a trend. It's typically, weekends are probably busier, and holidays. So like that Fourth of July weekend, that Fourth of July week is pretty busy. But it seems like there's not a lot of pileup for parking. It seems like I haven't had many days where it was overflow parking.
At least the times that I've used both beaches, I've, you know, during nice, warm summer days, I have, I've not done my scientific counting, but I never found, I never found them to be congested. I mean, there was like one or two or three vacancies, you know, but it wasn't, it wasn't a line and people getting turned away. Thank you.
So I don't have beaches in my book. So what do you have for cleaning the beaches this year? For like Cary Beach, for the stuff that blows in, like I've talked about it a couple of different times, and, you know, we did have the, the day workers there that use the tine rake to pull some of the stuff, but it's not, it's not a, it's not a utility rake that they use. And I had mentioned, you know, possibly hiring a subcontracting outfit to come in with a sand beach cleaner to clean along the front six feet, to pick up all the heavy leaves and the, the pine cones and, and the fish that wash in on a regular basis there, because it's, really shouldn't be part of the, 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 the beach watchers to take care of that.
Well, it is, it is part of their job to rake the beach and make sure it's clean, because we have one, so we put two together, so you have one who's managing the beach to do that, and then the other one who's at the gate. However, our maintenance staff has helped with that as well, just to do a deep clean and go over there and rake it. We've used an ATV where we will kinda rake some stuff up with the drag behind it, and we're using a rake, so...
So the other, the other question is pumping Albee Beach septic. What, do we have that scheduled in, or...
Mm-hmm, we do it every year.
Every year?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, two hundred series? Three hundred series?
Again, my old favorite. So three forty-one, you have an internet pipe, it's in your budget, but on the other page, it's not in your budget.
Yeah, so this one is, the reason why this is in my budget and it's not in the IT budget is because it's not part of the, from my understanding, Jim, it's not part of the town...
There's no software associated with it.
Right.
With this?
It's just a camera that's required with our lease agreement with Brewster.
Well, it has to be software. Software has to sit on a server, you have to be able to look at the camera.
But it's not part of like Block Five. They're not part of it.
I think it's part of the cameras, software package.
So who looks at the camera?
I have access to it, and we're having the police have access to it as well.
Okay. This isn't sent down to dispatch, is it? It's fed right?
It's in the process of...
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Can I ask a question about three eighty? So you monitor Albee's septic system? Is that what you do?
No, that's for the, the beach camera. No, this is for the bathrooms.
Yeah.
It's on a timer.
The septic system. So, so why aren't you, or should you, not why aren't you, should you be monitoring Cary Beach?
It's for the bathrooms that they unlock and lock, that's on a timer.
You got the Bridge Falls path going down by Albee in there, open longer than Cary and Brewster's.
Correct.
So because they're open longer, you wanna monitor them?
It's the, it's...
That doesn't make sense.
It's for, it's, it has an alarm hooked to the door, so it unlocks and locks. It's part of the system.
Okay, I, I just, you know, we have a beach, Cary Beach, we have bathrooms.
Right, but Albee Beach was a newer facility that had the capability, and it was put in the system, so the doors unlock and lock, and it has a locking mechanism with an alarm on it.
I got it. I'll, I'll stop my questions with a, I don't understand.
Okay.
Answer. Okay, thanks. I don't understand. It doesn't make sense.
This is a system that has a timer.
It should, it should do it...
It's just like the pavilion bathrooms.
I understand how the system works. I'm just saying, why wouldn't you do it for the beach down there?
We should take them for a field trip to the different bathrooms.
Yeah, I think so.
Come visit us.
It's wastewater, and it's down there, too. That's all.
Well, we can show you where all that goes.
Just be happy it doesn't happen to you at home.
Thank you for that thoughtful comment. I appreciate that.
Three hundred series? Four hundred series?
Notice Albee Beach is more, that's because it locks and unlocks.
He's, he's not letting go of this, is he? All I'm saying is you got poop near water, and you wanna make sure that those two don't come together. That's all.
John, four thirty-five.
Keep, keep us going, keep us going.
It says septic pumping. It's on there, listed, both of them.
All right.
And I would also add that the septic pumping system at Cary Beach is equipped with an alarm, that if for some reason the holding tank becomes full and does not pump, it does notify that there's a problem. does notify that there's a problem.
Who does it talk to, Jim? PD?
I'm not sure who it talks to, but it does have an alarm tied into it.
Thanks.
We had a situation this spring where the alarm was going off, and a resident informed us that it was going off.
So it could be enunciating to itself. Well, that's, but, but you know, the good news is we have an alarm. The question is, who's getting the notification? That's an easy check.
I don't know if the conduit went to the bath house there at Cary Beach or not when they did the parking lot, or did it just go to that middle island thing?
All right. I belabored this enough.
That small hut has electricity, is that what you mean?
So, well, I think what Paul's asking is, does the, does the internet go to the bathroom house at Cary Beach?
There is no internet at Cary Beach.
The only reason we have it at Brewster is it's part of our contract.
It's a newer facility.
I have a question on 435. The plumbing services, water off and on, that can't be done in-house?
So we do have the water department comes down, but they have to work with the plumber. They can't do everything.
To shut the water off?
Well, they probably have to drain it.
Yeah. You have to do a few more to turn it off.
I know, but I was just wondering why we couldn't do it in-house. Not a lot of money, but I understand.
Yeah.
600 series?
Is those maintenance supplies again?
Here's your toilet paper for everything, Paul.
800 series?
Yes, 830, you have the swim team listed, but you have no price for it. You're just keeping it as a placeholder.
Yeah, we're just keeping it because we, we do have the supplies to run it already because we had it from previous years because we didn't run it. But I just left it in there just in case for the future, so I know.
Okay, no problem.
So do they, do they put the docks in for the swim team?
This year, we did not put any in because we didn't have a swim team. We did buy just a floating dock because they just needed for a jumping thing. Sometimes if you don't have the swim team and we put the docks out, it proves to be more of a problem than it needed to be, so we didn't do it this year.
So what are the conditions of the docks?
They're in good shape because we have a whole shed that's dedicated to them that's stored, so they're in good shape.
Anything else about beaches?
Just 850, Jim, the, the quantity line looks like a, looks like a asterisk should be replaced with a zero. If that's right, 303.
So...
And I had a question on beach passes. How did it go? Was it, you know, we, we met in the springtime to talk about beach passes for other towns. How did it go?
Oh, it's fine.
No problem?
I think, yeah, people understand the procedure and...
Hotels were okay? No problems? Anything that fell, you know, that, any special circumstances that you want to talk about about beach passes?
No, I just think it's important for patrons to know that even if you've been a resident for 40 years, not everybody knows your face or name, so you have to have the beach pass or the dump sticker to get to the beach. You can't just show an ID. You can't, you just need that. So, you know, we try to be fair. We do have teenagers, sometimes older people running it, but it's a protocol. We're looking for the beach pass or the dump sticker. That's all we're looking for. And we tried to make it very easy, just so everyone knows, starting May 1st, we have that you can get them available. Typically, it's Monday through Friday, eight to four, which I understand that doesn't work. So anytime we have a special event, we try to have a weekend or an evening time slot for you. And as we get closer to the season beginning, we make sure we have those weekends and evenings. We did it at our summer kickoff, so there were, there were ample opportunities for people to get it. Also, people would call me if it didn't work out for them. We'd make an arrangement so we could have them meet someone to get it. So it is possible.
I have a beach issue here. So more and more, we have boats docking at Cary Beach off the lines. A few times this year, people voiced concern about the boats being so close to the lines, wanted to know if we could put a safety barrier out at the 200-foot line level that we're, we're, we can, that's a distance that we can go to, 200 feet out. Whether or not we want the, the line itself to go out, I'm wondering if we can create a buffer line that keeps the boats away from our lines so that we can have a safer environment.
I sent, I asked John McDonald, I dealt with this this summer and sent all the information, I think, to Jim on exactly the process the town would have to go through in order to do that. And I think we maybe could get another 50 feet. We can't go out 200, as I recall.
Yeah, so we tried to tackle this a couple of years ago, and the way that the rules were written, and I'll, I'll dig that email back up, John, and forward it to you, but it was very restrictive based on the water depth and the distance out that we could go. And I think that it is going to take a change at the legislature level to be able to make this happen. But let me dig that email back up and forward off to you.
So Jim, you're talking about the, the beach line and not this thing out here?
The beach line at Cary.
Correct. Okay, because even this thing out here, moving the buoy, John sent us all a note, you want to move the buoy, you get all the butters to kind of say, move the buoy, then you got to petition the state.
Yep.
It's kind of a, it's kind of a live free and you die situation.
So I know in other, other areas around the lake, they have the red balls that are put up in like West Guilford and...
Yeah, they could, they could be out there, and it could be that they just planted them, you know, just defiantly planted them.
It's not, it's not a, it's not a line, it's a red ball that is accepted by the state and the, and boat patrol to keep distance away from.
Can you bring us that information, John? For tomorrow night, if you can get it, what the red balls are, how far they're out?
I don't have, I don't, I'm sure you could look it up, but that's, I don't have the information, I'm saying.
They just observed.
That's correct.
Was that Guilford, John?
That was Guilford.
And you're sure those are from the state, or they're state-recognized, or?
They are, because when the state, the patrol came through, they made sure that you're away from the red ball areas.
Christine, how many lifeguards do you have?
We always have two on at one time.
How many certified do you have, usually?
Last year, we had five last year.
All right, so you keep it at seven certifications because you would like to have seven lifeguards?
Yeah, so we try to, we'd like to have more than seven lifeguards, but it really is, I think it's a two-year certification, so we rotate. So we only were able to get five last year, but some people already had their certification, but they'll be up for the following year, so.
Not to, not to go backwards, but I, when you go to, is it Ming Cove or Ming Cove? One or the other. When you go to, when you go over there, there's a sandbar, and there are red balls at the back of the sandbar, and those are state things because the, there is a delimiting distance where you cannot go too close to the shore where private property is. So the state will kick you out if you anchor in there or if you motor in there. I think that, you know, the question for us is, can we extend those, no swim lines down there out further? And I'm not sure that, I don't know how we do that. If you can dig it up and show it to us, that'd be great. I just know that it's a, it's, it's just short of an act of Congress to get anything done on the waterway because of the, the way the state has set up the regulations.
Okay. We did call the state to have a conversation because I did get a lot of those complaints about the boats. And even if we were to get a no rafting zone, it doesn't mean that the boats can't tie together.
You can apply for a no rafting zone, but that just means boats can't tie together.
They can't raft.
They could still come in, throw their anchor down, and all just line up next to each other. I've had multiple conversations with the state, and I believe they said it's on the citizens of the town to petition the state.
Right.
And to have that done.
And no rafting, I think two tied together is okay. Three or more is considered rafting. So people see on the map, no rafting zone, and they, it's a misnomer. They think that that means that no boat can be sitting there with an anchor, and that's not the case. Anywhere in this lake, any place during the day, you can put an anchor down and leave your boat there. You can't do it at night.
Can't overnight park.
And I did call the state a couple of times. They did swing over to Cary Beach, and there was no problem. People were allowed to do what they were doing, so.
So is that something that we would petition the town, Jim, just on a warrant article to see if we would petition the state to move the lines out?
I, I will look into it. John?
I think the petition would have to be from the butters.
I think he's right.
Yes.
I, I, I think he's right.
I think in that email it did.
I think if we did a warrant, I think I remember talking to John about this. We did a warrant article, say, would say, well, that's very interesting, but to get all the butters. And I think the, the issue, because I was asking them around here, because I've always had this concern about people presenting big bow waves, either leaving or coming in. And John showed me the reg and said, everybody around here has got to sign a petition, which is kind of...
I will say, when I first started here, I did the application for the swim lines. I learned that I did not have to do an application every year to put the swim lines out, but we can apply for a variance to extend those swim lines with the state. So that, there is a process for that.
That'd be great.
Came from, what's his name?
I could be wrong, but it says that a red round buoy is a channel marker. So they may be marking over in West Dalton, they may be marking the entrance to the West Dalton Channel. I don't know.
It's for the beach.
Yeah, it's usually black and red.
Solid, solid red is a channel.
Parks programs?
Your next budget, is it parks programs?
I think so.
Okay, your next budget being parks programs. That's going to be for 2026, proposed 137,000, $595, a decrease of $5,790 or 4% over 2025. Christine will be able to speak to this. I believe as well in the backup, you'll see the projected revenues for 2026 based on the program, which is $47,925. So there is an offsetting revenue being seen on this operating budget. 300 series?
Yeah, 380. What was moved? I'm assuming something was moved out of here. What was the big mover?
Was it the split of the trees?
The bathroom cleaning.
Bathroom cleaning? Okay.
We put that with the building maintenance to keep it uniform with the other budgets.
It goes, how many buildings are being cleaned for 17,000?
No, it wasn't just that one. What else was in there?
Did you split the tree removal, which you did, a trash removal? Did you split, it says split your trash removal.
Does include dock side. Railroad station.
I believe this is just the pavilion, right, Christine?
Oh, yeah, this is just the pavilion.
But it says split between pop and ever.
It does for trash removal.
Was, is that, so is it the NIC in there too?
15 or 16.
Oh, that's on rentals and leases. Did that get moved from there? That of, ah, somebody, 435. Sorry.
All right, maybe when we get to 435, we can figure it out.
Well, so here's how it works. The number goes down 17, 978. You moved 5,580 bucks to line 435. So where did the other negative? I can't do math without a calculator. Where'd the other 11 grand go?
Oh, okay, I found it. Sorry. So it was the bathroom cleaning pavilion bathroom, but I actually had it at 18,000 because I had combined beaches, the Albee bathrooms with that one, and I realized I should have split it to do half in the beaches budget and half in the programs budget because that was an 18,000 dollar one. That was from 2023 budget. That's why. Sorry.
So, so what you're telling me on this outside service is what had to do with the pavilion went to 435, and what had to do with the beaches just went over to the beach?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
400 series?
It went down about 7,000.
Yes, so that's for the NIC. We were utilizing the NIC. We have, after COVID, have cut down on a lot of the usage just due to enrollment.
Okay.
So I went back to the NIC to renegotiate our pricing, and that stayed. So that's what that is.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the same question on 435. Turn off and turn on. We get $1,200 for six in the beaches. And here we have two for 800.
Yeah, I think the beaches ones are a little bit easier. The pavilion bathrooms have special flushing mechanisms and all that, so I think it's a little bit more. And plus, we also have the water fountain over there, so that's another piece of that puzzle. So we have three bathrooms and that water fountain to turn that on.
Do we use a local plumber for this?
Yes.
Do you mind saying who it is?
Brookside. So this is, if we go back to that 2023 budget, we didn't have senior programming in there, and this is why you're seeing an increase. We also did remove day camp stuff from here just because we realized when we were collecting funds that where the, the employees are coming out of the budget, but the actual things that we need for day camp is actually coming out of the revolving, so through the payments. So we removed that, and then we just added the seniors in there. So that's why you're seeing a shift there.
I have a question about the seniors. I was looking at the monthly budget report, and I was looking at the donations. There's still $25,000 for senior program. What is that going to be used for?
So it, I don't know. We haven't touched it yet, but it can be used for if we do a trip or for lunches. I just haven't tapped into that resource yet, so.
It seems like it's been sitting there for a while. It was given to offset some of the program and the responsibility that we took on by taking that program. And so I think that we should try to...
Okay.
It doesn't have to be spent in one year, but to start.
Right.
Put it to work.
Yes, there's a good one.
This isn't, if I could, this isn't meant to be a criticism, but as you finally... This isn't, if I could, this isn't meant to be a criticism, but as you finally, you know, this, this budget goes in a lot of different, you know, we moved money over here, and then we put money over there, and then we separated this. And, and that, that's all for good accounting purpose. There's no question about that, I guess. What I, what I hope during the calendar year we can hear more of is the effectiveness of the programs, so that somebody up there watching TV can say, that was a good one. Because this is important to us somewhat. But I think that, you know, knowing that our field hockey program brings in N number of people, we have Y number, you know, that, that kind of metrics that tell us, tells the public that that's a good investment. Or, you know, our swim team, last year we had this, those kinds of metrics inform the public that we're doing the right things. These things are important, but I will bet that unless somebody is, is crazy as the rest of us, their eyes are glazing over figuring out that we moved this from the, to the 435 line and this one over to the 804 line. I understand we have to do that, but I don't, I think they need to know a little different look at what we're doing. Like, programming for seniors, I don't know what that means. I do, but I don't. How many reran? How many people attended? Did we put some of that money to work? That kind of stuff would be helpful.
Okay.
You'll get more questions, but it'll provide more answers.
800 series. At the end of that report, you have the, the actual revenues.
Coming from these programs.
For '23, '24, '25, and projected for '26.
Can I speak for a moment? So we did do a report. We didn't add it to it. But this was from 2025, from January 1st through June 30th. We off, we had 906 registrants. We brought in $19,954. And this included races to big air competitions, to Lego camp, to line dancing. And then from July 1st through current, we had 1,511 registrations. This was for Granite Kid Triathlon, the Turkey Trot, Day Camp, Granite Man Triathlon. We did some adult pickleball camps over at Pop Whalen. We did adult tennis in the parks. And we were, as we just started out with this website, we're trying to get more of this information on the website, just so we can share information with people. Sailing classes, lessons, swim lessons. So we do offer a lot of variety, but we can share that information.
Just, I just didn't, maybe I didn't catch it. How many children go through the day camp in the summer? To me, that is one of the major services that we help. The children's center can't produce anything at this level. And I used to have it just packed.
Yes, I will say, this is probably the first year since after COVID I'm seeing wait lists again, and we're getting back to where we were prior to COVID.
Yep.
So even for staffing purposes, we had a lot of people applying, which was nice. And in previous years, we were like begging people to come work for us, so it has been good. Do you have a number?
Roughly 60.
60, close.
And we run it for seven weeks.
So the good news is you're collecting the data. The better news would be if we could package that into, and I'm not telling you how to do your job, but if that all found its way onto a hunk of paper with all the other stuff, and so that somebody would look at that and say, that's great information. So turning that, those data elements into information that those folks out there can look at and go, good investment, right thing to do, tax dollars well spent.
You know, and I would look at it and saying, fantastic, 400 and some odd kids had at that kind of an opportunity, and not so much into the money bit. But that's the service. I think that's the community service we look for. That's where we want to put our money for, in kids.
Sure.
So this, to me, that's what that is important for.
I will say, we have a lot of people who come outside of Wolfborough to vacation here. And we do get a lot of compliments of people who cannot believe how amazing our rec department is for all that we offer in a town. So, and, you know, going to conferences and seeing other, other recreation departments. We are probably one of the fewest departments that are running like year round, because most people in the winter are planning their summers, while our winter is full on. It's a lot, but we love it. But we are, we are very lucky in this town to have both winter amenities and summer amenities. Like, not most places can say that. They either have one or the other.
But what a great conversation next year to have that says, I want to expand children's summer programs because we've had a waitlist the past three years running, and we want to add another, more capacity. What a tough conversation that would be.
So it was great to hear you say that we should put our money into the kids, because if we build the community center, how much will we be able to increase our program with kids?
Well, I think right now, with the community center where we have, it's difficult for us. We run our day camp over at the pavilion. It doesn't have the capacity to house all those kids in there. And we used to split them with half the school and half at the pavilion, but that doesn't seem feasible sometimes with the school and their schedules. So right now, at the beginning of the, the day, we need to be weathermen and kind of watch what the weather's going to look like, and if it looks pretty severe, then we, we make the call and we have them over at Abenaki and Pop Whalen.
Which is a plenty big facility.
Right, which is nice. The downside of that is that if Brian has a program going on, or some like flea market or something, that really puts a damper on everything, so we try to make sure we're working together. But it would open up capabilities to have the rainy day location at the same facility where the regular, the, the camp is. So that would make it enticing.
And so people understand, that's only if it rains, because we want them outside running around.
Right, yeah. I mean, sometimes though, you have to remember, when it's super hot out, it is nice to have a break to go inside to cool down. So it does have that opportunity for that as well.
But we've come a long way.
It does have the potential down there to increase the, the program for the kids.
Because then you'd have a place that you could have more people at, yeah.
I think you forget what we used to have down there. That old building that the sewer backed up in here.
Oh, yes, I remember.
Half the time, and being able to put that pavilion up was a lifesaver.
Yeah.
So we've come a long way, and that's what that whole pavilion was for, was for the day camp.
That pavilion is very nice.
Yep.
I see so many people utilizing it on their lunch breaks. We had cornhole down there, like, there's a lot of people rolling through that area. And I think so much so that the, we put a little tiny library in there from Dare, had put a library in there, because, I mean, it is, I do get warm fuzzies when I drive by there and see like families with their kids in the park, and then people are playing baseball in the field, and then the whole pavilion's filled up, and you have tennis and pickleball. Like, it is a happening facility, and then they're walking on the path, so.
How many, how many people can you fit in the room down there? Does it have an inside room?
That room is really for storage, and it's an office space, so there's no capability of putting the kids in there.
So, so we, so it's just an outside area?
Yes, it's the outside.
It's not an enclosed area? It doesn't have any indoor facilities?
Correct.
Any indoor expansion programs, has, has no room for it to grow?
Nope.
I would say no.
No? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so your next budget is the community center. Community center budget, 2026, $10,635, an increase of $3,161 or 42.3% over 2025. I believe most of this is in one item, and Christine will be able to speak to it.
Hang on, I, I have docks is my next budget. Clark complex, hang on, cemeteries. I don't think I have a community center, Jim.
I have a community center.
I'm going to look on with Linda.
Okay.
I'll come over and look on with you.
The rest, do you have it?
I have one.
Hang on.
So there were, there were two items that went up. One was telephone. Paul can, Paul can address that. And another one was building maintenance. So telephone went up $1,428, and building maintenance went up $1,547, which is, hmm, that's 44.7%.
Would you like to find, have the same format we've had? So you can bring that up when we get there?
Okay.
Okay?
So there's no 1, 200 series, 300 series?
And I just said it, okay.
300 series, that is the internet down there, because we were doing senior programming, so we could have internet and phone down there.
All right, now, has it always been there?
No.
Okay. So we added an internet to the community center?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Again, just go back to Breeze Line, somebody, they, in our contract, they have complimentary services that they at least used to provide to us.
But Paul, that complimentary service is for cable only, correct?
Correct.
Not for internet?
Not for internet.
No, 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 no. You can't have TV. You can have internet.
No, I think it's the other way around.
I might be wrong, but I don't think so.
I will get clarified on that.
I think it's pipe only.
I, I think it's cable services that we can receive, one per building, and internet we have to pay for, but I will get that clarified.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty sure, because when we were doing the EV chargers, the same thing happened. They said that Breeze Line was going to be a fortune to do that. That's why we went with cellular connection.
So if you all remember, our, our friend Sarah Silk had an internet connection at her little thingamabobber up there on the hill.
It was a phone, I think.
And it was a phone. It wasn't, it was, she also had it for internet connectivity. So you might be right, Jim, but I think it's internet, not TV service.
I think that came, and it was when the cable came in, and at that time, I don't think there was internet connections.
Yeah, okay, well. Hey, if we could save a couple of bucks, we save, if not, you know.
So, so what would internet be used for in the community center?
Well, you could use it for internet access. You could put voice over IP on it and make a phone line in there. You could hang a camera on it. You could, you could have shared video gaming. You could do all kinds of fun stuff. Anything's going to take you out to the internet. Security, alarms.
If we were down there during coffee and conversations, whether it was Lexi, our senior programming, programmer myself, Christine, we bring our laptop, we're able to work from there as well.
Hang out. Play on your laptop. I did see that budget, Jim, because I remember the uplift on the maintenance. It's just out of sequence of course.
You know what's, you know what we don't have this year that I miss is that the pages are numbered.
Yeah.
Because you could keep your sequence.
There you go.
We've all had trouble with it.
What did Reagan say, there you go again?
I put Pop Whalen in the wrong spot.
400 series?
Okay, so at 400 series, we've added building maintenance of $1,547, which is a 44.7% increase. So my question is this. If this is a building that we're not going to use, that people want to be abandoned, why are we spending 44% more on maintenance on it and adding internet to it? I'm just confused.
Because the department had received directives from me, if you recall, in July of 2025 to begin building their budgets. The discussion about what the status of the community center never came in front of me until, I believe it was September 5th, at which point the department had budgets were already submitted and in play.
Okay.
So I guess that would leave one of two choices, Brian, should that budget just be completely removed?
I don't know. I would assume that the town manager, when he looked at it and made it his budget, would have, could, it could have been moved before it came to us. I don't know. I have just no idea.
Well, the truth of the matter, it's here. If something else changes before we send it to the budget committee, we can do something.
Yeah, yeah, right.
All right.
Let's look at what's here and then decide what we're going to do with it later.
I agree with you.
And I, I guess I would also say that, you know, if this place were to be closed, I think that we would still be required to do boiler maintenance and inspections. We'd still have to do fire extinguisher inspections. So those two items would still be in there. Granted, it's a short percentage, but those items would still be in there. With, when Christine built this budget, and she can speak to it better than I can, but I think the biggest takeaway or increase in this line was cleaning the building more regularly. Is that correct, Christine?
Yes. Yeah, from 2020.
And $1,500 of an expense on a building, I understand the percentage is 44. That, that's the eye-popping number. It's 44% up. Well, a two-on-a-one is a double. That's an eye-popping number. But when you get down to whole dollars, it's $1,500. My, my question, setting aside this notion of whatever could happen in the future, my, my question would be, is that enough? We doing the right thing? And I think the answer we're all finding is we may be, in my words, we may be living of the sins of our past. It's not enough.
We have 77, 75,000 in an account for maintenance that hasn't been used.
And that might be a question to ask ourselves is, you know, what do we do there? Maybe not tonight, but there's some tranche of, of capital sitting there waiting to be put to work.
But don't forget what Linda just said was, once we get all the budgets done, before we send it to the budget committee, we have a right to come back to any budget and alter them.
Well, we should.
So I think that we have time enough.
Yep.
Yep, that's what I am thinking.
So I don't think we ought to say, let's knock it out completely, because we aren't there.
No, I think that, Dave, I completely agree with both of you. And I'm sitting here looking at these things line by line and trying to fit it into the big picture, and I haven't seen the, the whole picture yet. So I agree. We, we need to come back and, and kind of remind ourselves of what we think is important or not.
Shall we, shall we put this as a revisit?
I just, I was going to say.
Second, you say it.
I think we should mark it as a revisit.
Are you revisiting 435 or the whole budget?
Budget.
The whole budget.
I think, I think as we look at the, the big picture, we, we do have a, a subcommittee, and when, when, you know, you, you've had the discussion, Linda, that we should shut the building down that, that afternoon, I don't know if we were, we're talking about shutting the building down permanently, or we're going to mothball it, or we're just going to heat it, or what are we, what are we going to do with it?
Well, my understanding is the reason I said that was because I was told it was unsafe. That was the reason I said, let's get the people out. Nothing more than that.
So, so should we have a sub, subcommittee meeting to go over this, to discuss it?
I think we have a group of people who are coming in with another proposal, and I think we need to listen to that. That's, I'm not.
I can't, I, I can't see this town slamming the door in the face of citizens who want to come to us and raise money to restore the building at no cost to the taxpayer. I don't think we've ever done that to any citizens for any building in this town.
That is a seductive comment, and we should, to Linda's point, maybe yours too, we should listen.
Yep.
That is a seductive idea. I'm all for being seduced.
I don't know whether you really wanted to say that.
No, no, but, no.
Do we need a recess? Do we need a recess?
Do we need to turn the heat off? Now, John makes a point that says, I mean, should the committee get together and have a chat? I think that's a right thing to do. Tomorrow night, some folks are, you know, we've already decided, I think, we've decided to just take this, this budget piece, park it for a minute, so that we can hear what's going to come in tomorrow night. We should listen to that. Those words are seductive. I mean, no toss, I'm all ears on that. And then the, the team ought to get together and say, what do we want to do?
And I did present.
I think that's a great idea.
I did present, Dave, with a copy of the agenda for tomorrow night, because I had it on me, and I still hope that we move that meeting forward, because there, I know that there will be a lot of seniors that will be coming to our meeting. I did present, Dave, with a copy of the agenda for tomorrow night because I had it on me, and I still hope that we move that meeting forward because there, I know that there will be a lot of seniors that will be coming to our meeting, and I think it's disingenuous to make them sit for three hours. I think that's mean-spirited, actually.
I, I just, I don't think it's mean-spirited. I just would like the board to really think about who will show up and to, for that, and whether we shouldn't think about moving it forward. I think it's awful late, and we've had a lot of people come to speak to it, and I think it's important that we not keep them until whatever time we finally get through with the majority.
And to do it tomorrow night at six-thirty to them, I think that could be mean-spirited too because.
Not to be, not, not, I don't like that word. This, I'm not, you can use it. It's, you know, you, freedom of speech thing. We, we've heard the concern, and it makes sense maybe to, to move it. If it makes sense, we'll move it. The mean-spirited thing suggests that we got in a room and had a contrives. We didn't do that, right? It's just the way it laid out in the agenda. You may, somebody may assume it's mean-spirited. I personally don't. But I do accept what Linda's saying, that some people may be showing up early and want to get a full opportunity to hear what's going on. That's fine.
We also say in our agenda is that the meeting starts at six-thirty. So the people who want to speak to this tomorrow night will probably be there at six-thirty. So then we can move it then. That's my feeling.
Thanks.
I have that here, Brian, and I see what you're saying, and I don't have an issue with doing that tomorrow night. I don't think it should be part of this meeting. Okay, Jim?
All right, so we're tabling this budget.
Parking lot.
Docs next?
Docs is next.
I don't know if I have docs.
You may have just disabled our.
Patriotic.
Feed going out, but.
You want my docs?
The docs budget is, this is the, the doc fans down there at the town docs over the summer, who are full-time employees, who come in on the weekends and work at a stipend rate to help with docking boats coming in. This has been really successful over the past couple of years, and we're coming to you for 2026 with a two-hundred dollar increase, one point one percent over 2025, for a total budget of eighteen thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars. And the bulk of that is just increased monies for staff shirts while they're down there working.
Docs. Hang on, Jim.
Any questions?
I don't seem to have that budget, but I don't have any problem with it.
Okay.
Everyone just misses one.
So I believe the next budget is patriotic purposes. Twenty-twenty-six proposed budget, fourteen thousand six hundred and ninety dollars, an increase of three thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars, or thirty point seven percent over 2025. Christine, Sam, and I have all had conversations about this. We think that next year, this should be considered as potentially a agency. Don't need to make a decision on it today, but this is the budget in front of you. Increase of thirty point seven percent.
Yeah, no, it is an agency.
I didn't understand the comment, Jim.
Yes, yes, what he said.
That you think it's, not now, but there's a, a notion here of creating an agency budget here?
This should be an agency.
It helped me. Your logic.
Because these people are coming in, they're asking for a gross amount of funds. Sometimes, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but they, we cut them a check and we cut them a check based on a reimbursement, correct?
Yes. So typically, when we're purchasing things, we do POs, we get, we, right. It's just, they have their own checkbook, and sometimes we're getting reimbursements, and sometimes we're trying to order things. They've had a lot of changing of the guard. Truthfully, I don't have any dealings with this in my budget, except handing them money. So it's really not something I manage. So it seems like they, they are an agency requesting funds that we're giving, and I did ask the question, like, why aren't they treated like an agency? Why are they in our budget? And I wasn't sure what the history was behind that.
Because Christine's defending a budget that she really knows nothing about.
Right, and it's hard.
That's, that's a great idea.
It's hard to just hand money over without, you know, everyone else is required to do bids, or get quotes, or do all that, and we're just giving money, and we're not following procedures. So would they be more of an agency versus that? I will say for this budget as well, I know there is an increase. However, they had not spent any of their money, so I had a serious conversation with them. I said, to ask for more money when we haven't spent any money is probably a little interesting. So I'm not sure that's the route we're going to go. So I do think you could probably level fund this. I don't think you need to do the increase because they just purchased all the, the flags they need for next year. This month, they're sitting in my office.
I thought in other budgets, I'd get a thing that'd say X number of flags, boom, blah, 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 this. So I would know, and you would know, how many flags, how many grave markers, you know.
I do have that. I'm sorry. I did submit it with it, but I don't think we had made a copy for you, and unfortunately, I don't think I brought one, but I can get you that.
So.
They did get some donations, so I think they, they are in a good spot right now. So I don't think you need to do the increase. Like I said, we just purchased their flags for 2026.
So how did the Independence Day weekend festival get in there? And the Kate Park Band, and the band.
This is all stuff they do for that weekend festival of Fourth of July. They're trying to increase the number of bands they have, and they want to have a big hoopla on that weekend. So that's what they added in there. So it was the flags, and then they're adding all these extras.
So this, so from Independence Day weekend down is in addition.
This is all them. This is all them, but that's for that weekend, yes.
I understand, but that's what I'm questioning, is this coming down? What it used to be was for flags, grave markers, and hardware, period.
Now more.
No more.
Does this include Memorial Day too?
Now, more.
Now more, and that's what I guess I'm, I'm questioning.
So I want to, I want to get back to a comment, if I could, Dave, that Jim made. So, and actually, Christine, I think you made the comment. So at the beginning, or at some point in time during the year, you get a bill. You write a check. Embedded in that bill, it just says, I'm going to make it up, flags, graves, markers, and hardware, nine thousand two hundred and ninety bucks. You just write a check. Is that how it works? You have no, you have no audit on that that says to produce this many flags, this many, you don't have a.
They did give us a sheet that says what they were purchasing, so I do have that sheet, so I will submit that to you. But when they ask for funds, it's just, we bought this, here's our receipt, we need.
The reason I bring it up is, I, I thought I heard you saying, thank you for correcting it, that you just simply remit a gross dollar amount, and off you go. We, we shouldn't be doing that, period. Should we? We should never do that.
I, I don't think we should, especially to a nonprofit where other nonprofits are asked to go through a matrix to do this. Now, I'm not sitting here saying that I'm opposed to grave markers, flags, anything like that whatsoever.
Well, you could be. Just, just be careful. You could be.
Because I'm not. But the takeaway for me is, we have other agencies who do very valuable work for the community, and they have a process that they have to go through to secure their funds. Do these people need to go through that same process?
So I would say this, you now have a very young, new treasurer at the American Legion. I think he's sixty-three or sixty-four years old. And he's been looking at books, and he's, he's, he's really doing a good job. I think that it should be a conversation that we have with him.
I've had a conversation with him already. He does agree that it probably could be an agency.
Correct.
So when I talk to him, he does understand that, because we've been going back and forth as he's trying to take the reins away that he's been given, and it's, you know, habits, and it's hard habits to break. So.
And I think, I think this, this also includes the Memorial Day celebration and flags that they put out and grave markers they do on Memorial Day too, and the Fourth of July. I would hope that if it does go to an agency, that our board or any board going forward would support them, because they, they do a lot for our community, a lot.
They do. I just think, like, if we're, we're comparing apples to apples, this is a budget that I, I don't really, it's not under my domain, so why, and it's a whole different organization, so it does seem.
But you're asked to, you're asked to.
Defend it.
I shouldn't say defend it. You're asked to support it, defend it, whatever the right words are, and you really, you, you really have no management control over that.
Correct.
That's, that's an interesting thing.
I don't know why it's in our budget. I could suppose that it was put in there years ago so that we would know that the money was always there, that it wasn't something that would disappear because of what they do for the community. But if it has to be an agency, because that's correct, that's the way it's going to be.
Well, to Jim's point, I remember, because I just saw it the other day, last year, I wrote, I was writing notes to myself feverishly as the agencies, the nonprofits, were coming in and talking about their needs. And the clarity of how many meals got served, how many children got helped, how many seniors got transported to medical facilities, how many miles they drove, I was, I was so smitten with that amount of clarity. And each one of them, with the exception, I think, of one, asked for the same amount of money they asked for the year before.
Because we told them that's all.
Because we told them that's what they had to do. And you know what? They came in and said, well, if you really want to do it, here's what we did, you know? But, but I looked at that and I said, shit, why can't we have that? And that's why I was asking you earlier about, you know, publishing good news. I, I, why would we not want this to go into the agency domain or realm?
I think, I think it would go. I, I don't have it.
Well, I think Jim has some direction on that.
Do you want a motion?
I've got a question first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So was the fireworks in this?
No.
No.
So that, so the spring, when we, you came to us and said, we could eliminate patriotic purposes, was this the, was this the item that you were considering?
No.
I think there's, because there's.
There's another budget for fireworks.
It's four-five-eight-three-two is the fireworks. I think it.
So who's that under?
Again, it's under Christine.
It's under the umbrella of patriotic purposes, but it's the fireworks. It's four-five-eight-three-two. I think when he did submit that, he was referring to the fireworks, not to this.
So Jim, do you want a motion?
Well, I think, yes, sure. I mean, if, if that's what you guys would like to do, the question I have, do you want that done for this year? Because they're going to have to put together some documentation in a matter of a week, which I think is unreasonable for this year.
They do already have their, they did give me a sheet that has everything that they're requesting, but like I said, they just, I, I don't know if it was changing of the guard, or they were kind of good with stuff. They didn't need to purchase anything this year. So we purchased what they need coming up, and I said, maybe we should only request the eleven-two-thirty-six and not ask for more, because it seems like you've already got what you need.
So I'll make a motion that currently known as line, item four-five-eight-three-one, patriotic purposes, in 2027, move into the agency's budget? Is that the right budget?
Who was the agency?
Excuse me?
Who was the agency?
They're all, all our nonprofits.
Visiting Nurses Association, Meals on Wheels, and, and forty-eight.
You're going to move that to the 2027 budget?
In the 2027, twenty.
Twenty-twenty-seven.
Okay, that makes a difference.
Who oversees that?
To 2027.
Who oversees the agency?
So if it's approved at town warrant, traditionally, in, after the first round of tax bills come in, we cut the check to that agency and mail it to them directly. This year, we were able to mail them the check along with the information they needed to be able to submit the 2026 requests.
John, you'll see those agency, agencies come in, because we'll jointly meet with them, with the budget committee, and I'm prejudging. You'll be wowed.
It's about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of agencies, I believe.
You'll be wowed with the clarity that they provide.
Yeah, we, we support them with a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, and they support the people in this town tenfold.
Sure.
With services for what we donate.
And so do the people give to those agencies unbelievably in this community, very much supported by volunteer services and by private donations.
Okay.
So I'll second Paul's motion. Beat you to the punch.
Okay.
I beat you, and it's for the 2027 budget.
Y'all is in favor?
Aye.
I would like to.
Ready, pose.
Sorry. I would like to revisit this. I'd like to see that list beforehand, because I'm, I'm wondering whether we don't want to go back to the eleven thousand two-thirty-six, but I'd like to see their list.
I think that's right.
We'll ask them as well if they have any issues with that, which it sounds like Christine's already had that conversation.
I've already had the conversation. They seem fine with it.
It could be arbitrary if we did it now, but.
Yeah, let's get the information then.
What happens if they have money left in their account or budget, or I don't know how this is going to work, when they go to be an agency?
Because they have to give us an accounting of it.
So what does, what happens to that money?
It's still theirs.
Still theirs.
The problem is, right now, you know, we, we may only, not a problem, but we may only spend three thousand dollars for their benefit.
So the first year of their agency, we could take into account what they had left from us if we wanted to, and then going forward after that, bump it up to a, a normal amount.
Bingo.
What they need, they'd have to make that adjustment every year.
Correct, and I just wanted everybody to understand.
Yeah, I mean, so that's the, Brian, you're exactly right. So we, I don't believe, Sam could tell me, or Jim could tell me, I don't believe that at the end of this calendar year, if we've just written a check to somebody, we have no idea whether that money got spent.
Not a cost.
It's in their, it's in their bank account, unless, of course, we did an audit. If we were to say to an agency, you need to help us account for what you spent, and then we'll use that as your starting balance, and we'll build from there. That's a different conversation. But we, if we just cut a check, it's, it's gone off our books, onto their books.
Correct.
Would you say that the historical society would be the same way?
I, I don't know.
Is that a motion, Paul?
A motion to do what?
Make sure that they give us some counting, that all the money.
No, we'll do that when we have the conversation with the agencies. That would be my, my sense, John. Okay? Because that's going to put a whole bunch of work on, on Sam that she may already have done. I just want to make sure that we check with headquarters before we, we sign Santa for a whole bunch of work.
Okay, so the next budget, John, is actually fireworks.
Your favorite.
Twenty-twenty-six proposed budget, twenty thousand dollars, an increase of seven thousand, or fifty-three point eight percent. My understanding of this is uncertainty of products and potential tariffs. It's a very wild market relative to these commodities right now. Is that correct, Christine?
Correct. I reached out to the company that we typically use. They did earmark me for July 4th, because I will be honest with you, there is not a lot of companies out there, and especially for a Fourth of July show. They couldn't give me an exact price, so I said, I need to just know ballpark of a show that we had, what it would look like. They said it would be safe to say twenty thousand to put in. And as we get closer, we can figure out if we don't need that much because of the tariffs, or if stuff comes down, they're willing to work with us. But that's the, what I put in. I will submit, I gave it to Jim, but I don't think it got put in your packet, just a letter. They wrote me a letter, so we have that, so I will submit that for you as well.
And she went out for last night, Wolfboro, and we paid five thousand. We were thinking six thousand, came back seven thousand five hundred, so.
Right.
And do we have, do we have a contract?
I, I, I have a verbal contract that they said, we're locked in because we are a long-term customer, so we are drawing it up. So they, they wouldn't commit for three years, but they definitely said they would do this next year, because they just don't know, like, because they couldn't have pricing. You know what I'm saying? So they can commit to doing it, but not necessarily giving us pricing for three years. So we at least have them for this next year, and then we'll move forward with that.
Would they do a two- or three-year contract with an escalation clause in it, so that you say, if you give us a reasonable uptick, we can, you know, we can still say yes or no?
I could reach out to them and see. That's a possibility.
Because as, as you've said, with the way things are now, the companies are disappearing, and people are locking. and people are locking in, it's, and it's becoming a bidding war. The bigger communities will pay more money to get their fireworks shows and.
And I hope, I hope, you know, your, your, your strategy is successful, but you just answered, I think your question says, this is a seller's market. There's not a lot of them and there's a lot of us. And we want them to give us a three-year escalator contract and they sit there and go, nope, I have, I have others I can do business with.
And Independence Day is their biggest day of the year.
So you may have answered your question, but, you know, we should try.
Most places won't even do a show for under twenty-five thousand. So we're lucky that.
So since we, we don't have a, an out date, could you look into, like Portsmouth, and find out who does their fireworks and, and get a cost estimate from, from that place?
You just want to know if we're paying a competitive price.
Yep. I think there's only two or three in the state now, period, isn't there?
Yeah.
So it's just the way it is.
Yeah.
And you did shop around the, for the last contract?
Yes.
And found the best price for us?
Yes. So I, I can do it again.
It's worth a look.
Yeah, I'll definitely check it out.
It's worth a look. I just think it's a, you know, Brian, great idea, but I just think it's a, it's a, it's a seller's market. I have fireworks, I have a lot of customers who want to buy them, who's willing to pay. And nobody wants to, you know, they, I don't have to sign up with anybody for a multi-year gig. Maybe short-sighted on their part, maybe a brilliant strategy, I don't know.
Okay, so your next budget is the Clark complex. Clark complex budget, eighteen thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars, an increase of five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars or forty-four point three percent over twenty twenty-five. You will also see a capital outlay request that we'll be discussing this evening relative to this facility. Christine will be able to answer any questions you have about the budget. So, three hundred series. Four hundred series.
So building maintenance.
You can remove the hydrostatic tests. We're doing it this year because we had that in the budget, so.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
And it only has to be done once every five years, so that can be removed.
I still think that we need, as a town, either a committee, because I know that there's a gentleman in town who has a list of forty-two different contractors, and I still think we should have a committee with people with building and road expertise who can assist us, just like Wolfboro Waters does, and look at all the different buildings we have, go to the department heads, ask them what buildings are in need of what, look at things for us, catalog it for us, come to the select board and tell us, these are the, the, the immediate needs of different facilities in the town. I know that at the Clark Plaza, the Clark Museum Plaza, that there's, I know one wall that is in definitely tough shape.
The schoolhouse one?
Yes. And so it, it would be nice too if we had a catalog of all of our buildings and it was, and that's like, like an asset management plan, we could, but if we had a group, there are people I know out there that are willing to do this for our community. Experienced builders who build eight, ten, twelve million dollar houses and they'll, they'll volunteer their time to assist us. They're not doing the work. They're not getting jobs for themselves. They don't really need to fix a wall on a, on a schoolhouse. They, they have a career building, but they're willing to work with us and, and help us with these, with just eyes for road projects and for building projects and for, just like Wolfboro Waters does with all of its, all the.
Stuff they do.
Environmental projects for, for water quality.
I, I have a question on four twelve and four thirteen, and there's a big discrepancy between what's going out as sewer and what we're using water.
What's going down versus what's going in?
Yeah, it just.
What's going on there?
It's just a big discrepancy and I, and usually you have waters high, is, you know, and sewer are pretty close together in terms of usage.
Correct.
Because what, what goes out usually has come into water.
You sure you haven't got anybody on Clark Road making deposits?
No, the water's low, the sewer's high.
Water's low, sewer's high.
It's the opposite. If, if it was what you were saying, it would be the water was high, the sewer low. It, it, that's what's making.
Yeah, they'd be watering the lawn.
It's, yeah, this makes it, this, there's.
This is tipped over.
Will you just check those two out?
Yep.
It's not a big amount of money, but it does draw attention.
Yes, it does.
I believe Christine gave you a proposal for a reduction.
Motion to remove two thousand dollars from line four thirty-five.
One thousand, two hundred and fifty.
I believe it's twelve fifty.
I wanted it to get the two. I looked at the wrong one. Why couldn't you just say go?
Second for twelve fifty.
Yes.
Second for twelve fifty.
Damn.
Sorry, Christine.
It's like an auction.
Thought you were. Second for twelve fifty.
No, I think this is wrong.
Wait a minute, might be a correction here.
I don't know. I will, that's a revisit. That's, yeah.
Okay.
What do you want? We got a second on twelve fifty.
Going ones?
It's already been seconded.
Yep.
It was seconded by Brian.
Yep.
Y'all is in favor?
Aye.
Good, good.
Six hundred series. Eight hundred series.
Yeah, I'd like to just, Christine, fill me in on the docents. What, what, how many? What are they doing?
Okay, so this is another thing that, I don't know, it's the historical society that requests the funds and we cut them a check. So that was my question, should they be considered an agency?
How many are there at any given time?
But that's just that small bit. All the building is ours.
Right.
We're only talking about that little bit there.
Yeah, but these programs, the programs I don't manage at all. This is all the historical society.
That's correct.
Yeah, but the program piece is forty-four hundred bucks on a budget of eighteen, right? Is that really what you're talking about? But tell me about the docents, if you know. How many do they have?
I don't know.
You don't know?
That started.
It's all the historical society.
It started as a donation through.
As a donation through?
They, somebody gave a donation and that was what did it. And then as that donation dried up, the, the docent stayed.
Open their wallet.
That's right, it stayed in the budget.
Well, the concept of a docent in a museum is an outstanding idea. I mean, the right museum mastered that. They have docents that will help you as you, as you go through the facility, give you context of what you're seeing and give you background information.
That's what they do.
And they just love what they're doing and they're all, and so, you know, that set of activities right there drives attendance. Do you have attendance figures on the Clark?
This is the historical society. This really does not.
You don't get it, but this is in your budget.
Do, do, Christine, she just is the overseer of the property which trickles down.
So I will have them out the next budget series.
But this is historical society, keep, keep tabs on that.
They probably do have numbers, so I will.
It'd be a bad idea to see some numbers from them at some point.
They do have definitely numbers, the, what is it, the V and A house tour.
Right.
Way through their, this year.
I do know they just, they have a new president and they're really trying to revamp what they do. They're trying to be more vocal and have more activities over there. So I think they are growing. I did request for them to maybe sit in on some of their meetings so I could be in the know, since it's our building and they're running programs, just so we could kind of collaborate together, so we could understand what was going on. So they were receptive to that. So we're just trying to move forward with that and then I will have more information for you.
Jim, do you think this small amount should be an agency?
So I, I actually look at this similar to the library, I think.
Okay.
So I, it's our property. We have leased them the property for an extended period of time. I, I need to discuss this further with Christine.
I know that this isn't all the money, like they need to run what they're doing. This is just a piece of the pie that they're requesting from us because I did submit a sheet to you. So I'll, I have a sheet that says like what they spend their money on, so I can give that to you.
I think we should have that.
I think we should too.
And then just revisit this with that sheet. Because this is the question right here.
Right.
Everything else is.
Budgets should be an opportunity to clean things up that we think need to get cleaned and not that they're dirty, you know what I mean?
Right.
Organize things differently, that'd be good.
I, I think the only reason why I question that is it's another thing where we're just cutting a check and they're, they're doing what they need to do with it, but it's not how we manage it where we have a receipt and a copy of this and it went specifically to this vendor. Like, we're just giving them a check and they're doing what they need to do. That's why I question.
Honestly, that, to me, is, and I know you, you, you tell me that I do the finance piece, and that to me tells me that they should be arms-length to us.
So we, so we.
And they're not.
But they're not because they're in our building.
Correct. So, so we would have a budget for historical society properties and then we would, and then we would have a budget for, it's, I mean, then we would have an agency that's historical society programs?
We, we need to thresh out.
That's why I said to revisit. I think we need to do some thinking around this and.
And this again, wouldn't happen until twenty twenty-seven.
Right.
We need to thresh out.
But to revisit, to understand more about it, she has the, the printout, I think we, before we do it tonight.
So we'll revisit this budget.
Thank you.
Next budget is cemeteries, proposed budget, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars, decrease of thirteen thousand, thirty-five, forty point nine percent compared to twenty twenty-five. I believe part of this boils down to a couple of years now, we have not had anybody be able to do any stone cleaning. We had people who were doing stone cleaning for a couple of years and we were able to leverage funds out of the trustees of trust funds for that, but I don't believe they're doing any more work for us cleaning stones, correct, Christine?
They since retired, so we need to revamp that program again.
You gotta find an unretired person to do it.
Right.
But they did a nice job on the stones that they did make.
That they did.
So I mean, if you drive, if you drive up one oh nine A, those, those look gorgeous.
Mm-hmm. So it's one of those things we definitely want to bring back, maybe at a, that's why there's money in there at a slower capacity to get people up to speed, but we definitely do want to, we have all the equipment still, so it's.
Okay.
The voc center.
Oh, there you go.
Ooh.
Are they over eighteen?
Yeah.
Some of them, they could be.
I won't make it count.
So, one hundred series. Four hundred series. Five hundred series. Six hundred series. Okay, that takes care of that. I believe your next budget, is it Abenaki?
Yep.
Okay, so your next budget is Abenaki, twenty twenty-six proposed budget, a hundred and eighty-seven, five hundred and twenty-six dollars, an increase of eighteen thousand, sixty-one dollars or ten point seven percent. Beau will be able to answer most of these questions for you in conjunction with Christine. I think one of the big increases in this budget is the lease of the groomer, which we will get to. One hundred series.
On, I've got a question on the one hundred series. We no longer have any supervisor salary in this budget.
Correct.
That is, we're just paying, so people understand, even though Beau's ahead of it, his salary is not in this budget. He is in the administration.
Yes, correct.
And there's no administrative allocation across here.
Not involved here, no. Two hundred series. Three hundred series.
Well, this is again, it's a hard one on three eighty to know what was moved in and what.
What went in, what goes out.
Comes out and.
Some items.
Whether it's really an increase or not an increase.
Okay, so for three eighty, as you see, we manage a lot of budgets, so we're trying to be consistent with all the budgets. That's why we have this movement. Once it's moved, we've already done it once, but then we went, reverted back to the twenty twenty-three budget, so hopefully this will be the last time. So in outside services, we were trying to be transparent what was truly outside services, which, versus which was building maintenance.
Okay.
So things that were moved to this budget were the septic pumping, because it was an outside service, Gator annual service, the pump house annual service, the American refrigeration annual maintenance, the fire extinguishing testing, Sinta's inspection, which is for our stove in the Abenaki. Federal background checks were moved to this one because that's where it is in the other ones. The security alarm and monitoring was in there as well. So I think those are the only ones that were moved out of there.
The bottom stuff.
So it's just about the increase.
Four hundred series, this is where you'll see the groomer lease in here, increase of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. Five hundred series.
Third question on four thirty-five. On the building maintenance. I don't see anything in here for the, for rug replacement or cleaning.
Yes, I wrote rugs on that for me too.
Where are rugs?
Get cleaned. We got some up there with some pretty big spots.
Christine, we don't talk about rugs ever, do we?
Where are rugs?
Beau, this is all yours.
Christine and I have had multiple rug.
We are well aware that the rug in the facility is.
Crap.
Crap. That's the word you choose to use, yep.
Stained.
Two years ago, the carpet, we had a company come in and clean the facility. It didn't make it look much better. It is a high-traffic, heavy-used facility in the wintertime, as you're aware. I am looking at replacement ideas. Brian actually had sent over some information that we need to look into. It will be pretty expensive to replace that, so I'd like to kind of weigh my options and look at what the best replacement for that facility is. I've thought about composite flooring, rubber flooring, similar to what we have in the rink, that skate tile. You know, you can spill water on it, drop food on it, wipe it up, clean up, much nicer. They have ones now that look like hardwood flooring.
Ten bucks a square foot.
It's expensive.
It's more than ten.
Yeah. I don't know if that would be a capital outlay.
So, okay, so you gave us the, you gave us your thoughtful comments and Brian's given you a lot of information, so now what?
Yeah, there is, um.
We're in budget season now. What do you want to test?
That's next year.
I mean, this isn't, it's not gonna be in the budget, the pricing, it's gonna have to be a capital outlay, at least. So it wasn't something, we're still examining what's the best option, things that we need to remember. People are in ski equipment, right? So those boots kicking and trying to get the snow off, you want something that's durable. The other thing is, it's wet. And we thought about, do we just do flooring and put rugs down, but then people are slipping? We also have to remember that Abenaki is like a daycare because half the time it's mostly children and no parents. So we went right, so they're spilling drinks left and right. So these are all things we're considering. I know it doesn't look beautiful, but remember, this is where kids are hanging out. We're not screaming at them for spilling cocoa, right? Where accidents happen. So we know that we need something that can soak up that moisture so it's safe, but something that's durable and that can last long, which is probably going to be a little bit of an investment. So in a default budget for the past two years, we are looking at opportunities, but it might not, it's not for this season.
So the one I brought forward to them was one that is specifically made for lodges. It actually can be used in skating rinks. It's a carpet that you can walk on with skates and it still doesn't cut. It has a very, very dense pile, so anything that's liquid will stay on top. It will, it works really, really well, but it's probably very expensive. And you can make it look like wood. You can, they can do decorations and they can do all sorts of stuff in it, but it's, I'm sure it's expensive.
Take that information and all the other ones you have and come back with a proposal next year.
Problem has been defined, dimensionalized, strategirated. What do you want to do?
So I have a question about the design. So was that the Friends of the Abenaki's design, or was that our design to put that carpet down?
I think it was ours. I think the intent was smart and we were thinking, we'll just put squares down, and then if it gets ruined, you'll just change them. But that's not very easy. And then when you put the squares down, if you change them, it's a totally different rug.
I think I remember that, that we did it, because I think I remember the conversation that said if the rug gets all mushy, we could pull up the square. But we forgot that you put down a new square and it would be in original condition. It would look like, you know, bad, bad compared to all the others.
We also have to consider, are we going to keep renting it out for other things like wedding parties and graduation parties and things like that? So it has to have a little bit of an aesthetic. A rubber floor might be tough, I don't know. Unless you had bro rugs you could put on top of it for those events.
That wasn't what I was hearing. I was hearing that kids are using it for the Parks and Rec program. Is that what?
Yeah, that's one of our locations for day camp right now.
So our Parks and Rec program is actually now costing us, kind of, in our facility, rather than if you just had wet snow boots from skiing coming in, that wouldn't be so bad, because there's no dirt on them.
But you're serving food. It's where that falls all the time during the winter season. That's what it's hot chocolate, soups. I've been there with my grandkids. I'll tell you, all sorts of stuff hit that floor. And it's not day camp.
There is a lot of mud that comes in that building, too, especially late in the season and early in the season.
All right, so we can expect this. Good news is we got, what, 11 years out of that carpet. So, I mean, it's held up well, but it is.
Thanks for that.
The one I sent them has a 30-year warranty, they said.
So 435 on the paint, are we staining the building exterior, the clawboards? Are we doing any maintenance there?
The building has been painted, the exterior has been stained, and the trim has been painted. The maintenance staff just did that over the last few weeks. If you've been by, it looks much better. It looks great.
Pressure washed it.
So what about the roof? We're in year 11, so still.
Roof is in good shape.
Okay.
And I'll say this about all these, we need to have a time, a life, what is the life cycle of your roofs on all your buildings, so we know where these are coming and whether we can shift if we have something we know is going to happen on the maintenance building that may, is going to be large. We don't have the same thing happening on one of our other buildings. Steve, you got it. I've been trying. I get a big zero for that one. I can't get that. But it would be nice if you can get, start getting that, because then we can plan for things.
Yep.
500 series.
Yeah, I got a question. On 638, I'm seeing in all these budgets, a major increase in propane costs. Is that pretty much, it looks like it's everywhere as far as propane. Some of the others, diesel fuel and gas and stuff, isn't so much as far as the total increase.
I can't recall right off the top of my head what the incremental increase in propane is per gallon. I can get that information for you.
It seems to me, when I look through all of these, the propane line is way out of whack with the other fuels.
And I would also say that we've got a couple of new propane accounts that do account for some of that as well.
What does that mean, Jim? New propane accounts?
You have a new propane account at the library that you discussed last week. You have a new propane account at the public safety building that you discussed last week.
That's a big.
You have a better handle now on what the propane is at the Pop Whalen Ice Arena, now that we've got a couple of years under its belt. All three of those are substantial increases compared to years in the past.
So then there's two questions. One is, are we seeing just more consumption, or is the dollar per gallon, right? It's a P times Q. Is the price per gallon, right here it's a buck forty-six, I think you said, buck forty-two, or is the delta between a dollar forty-two and whatever it was last year, an uplift? That's all.
Or do we have a better handle on the number of gallons?
Well, that's what Jim's saying. Jim's saying we now are bringing two big users online. We probably have some good history on incumbents. So the question is, are the two big users throwing, Dave's thinking, the propane number out of whack, or is it the price per gallon? It's either P or a Q, price or quantity, some combination of both.
So the 2025 budget, we used a dollar forty-seven-nine.
Actually, the price has gone down per gallon, so the consumption's gone up. So Dave's observation is that we're using more propane at five cents less per gallon.
That would sure be it.
We, I can get, for the next meeting, I can have you guys the document used to create the RFP for propane.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anything else in the 600 series?
Here we go again, move to Parks and Recs.
But we did it.
Self-inflicted wound.
Well, I think we wanted programs all in one place. I think that's what we did.
Yep, that was last year's directive.
Dave, if I, so Beau, I really have enjoyed the one meeting I went to with the Friends. It was great. And in a similar fashion to what I was suggesting to Christine, I mean, we, and I bet you if you looked at your little hunk of paper there, you probably know, how many kids went down the hill, how many different programs did we run, how many racing programs did we run. That kind of information is, it's right there, isn't it? It's not there?
I do have that information. I don't have it with me.
I put him on the spot and he bailed out. But, I mean, knowing, knowing, and you collect the data, knowing those things, how many children came that we, you know, that we passed out, you know, gear so they could use the mountain, you know what I'm talking about?
We had over 5,700 visits last season.
So for somebody out there who says, why are we doing this? These kinds of data just paint a picture, and I'm not trying to be too, you know, phony here, they paint a picture that we're paying attention to, you know, this constituent, the kids, the rink. We're doing things. And I just, I cannot tell you enough that we hunt, people hunt for that information. My family does. They hunt for that information. And we ought to make it available anywhere that we possibly can, as long as there's one version of the truth.
So I was bored the other day and I decided to see what the actual increase in the budget would be if you pulled the groomer lease out and the actual increase was 3.2 percent. So this is how much the groomer hits that budget. And I've said it before, the three most expensive things to run are a pool, a ski mountain, and a skating rink. We have two out of three. Let's not have a pool.
Oh, there are lots of pools like a pool.
Look at the town.
Well, last time I heard, it was public safety hospitals. I guess I'm a little bit confused.
What day of the week was that?
So Beau was able to take and put together projected revenues for 2026 based on the rate adjustments that you, as the Board of Selectmen, made about a month and a half ago. And he's estimated of the $187,000 operating budget, he's going to make $119,000 in revenues for 2026. So it will only cost us about $60,000 to have that asset in the town.
And there was one other thing, Jim, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. One thing missing from here is the revenue we took in from the Wolfboro Cross Country Association. We make snow for them and we charge them. So this year we brought in roughly, I think it was $6,000, a little over $6,000.
And was the $5,700 part of that, the number of people who went through?
Cross-country.
No, it's for a snowmaking, not.
That's just for.
No, no, I'm saying, I thought you said there are 5,700 visitors. Did that include the cross-country skiing?
No.
No, it did not. You know, I agree with Paul, it's good to get those statistics. It's good for us to have those statistics when we talk to people.
We sell cross-country tickets, but we don't sell very many. A lot of people do get them in town or have season passes and then access either from Sewell Woods or come in through Abenaki.
So is the Sewell Woods the same one?
Mm-hmm.
So the cross-country pass is the same one as Sewell Woods? So you sell them, or does the business downtown sell?
They provide us with tickets and we sell them through our ticket windows, if people want to purchase them for the day at Abenaki.
So do they sell them for the town also?
No.
The only reason why we do that is because we have a lot of visitors coming to use our hockey rink in Abenaki. And then you'll have a parent who wants to go cross-country skiing. And now everybody's unloaded from their car and they're like, oh, you got to go get your ticket downtown. So it's more of a customer service thing, because people are already there. We don't sell a ton of them. It's just if you have that parent who wanted to do cross-country skiing and everybody's already there, they have that opportunity.
I think John's question is, who gets the revenue from the tickets?
They do. We put it in our system so we can record it and then we just give it back to them. It's their money.
Jim, what were your?
The Cross Country Association.
What were your three most expensive fire hos, hospital, what was up there?
Jail.
Jails.
And what was yours? Mountain, a pool.
Snowmaking.
And a mountain, a pool, and an ice arena. I'm just keeping, I'm keeping notes. And you want to see Linda roll over here. We don't have to make, we don't have to make a bucket everything we do.
That's correct.
See that?
You're right.
This would make sense, as long as we have the information to back up what we're doing. And as long as somebody can lift up the hood and make sure that what we're not doing is building overhead, you know, people who watch what's going on. I think people want to know what's going on. We are investing in what, in the programs piece, not in the people who watch the programs piece, because that always gets you in trouble. And then as it relates to the programs piece, and this is why I was asking you earlier, I don't know, you know, whether, whether you, you know, how you make decisions, all of you, what programs you should and you shouldn't run. I just don't know how you do that. Not here to learn tonight. But that would help, so that, so that people can say, ah, there's a method to their madness. You know, they look at certain programs, if they fit, they don't fit, they don't get attended, they try, and they move to other things. I mean, that kind of narrative, at least for me, and I hope for the people that are out there, if they look at that and say, oh, that makes sense. I'm willing, I'm willing to go with that. As long as the go with that doesn't mean outrageous amounts of money.
Well, and I think.
Am I doing all right with that?
Yeah, I'm going to come back to this, where you take, you look at the POP. The POP has the administrative piece. This does not have the administrative piece for these people.
We'll get there in a minute.
But I just, I mean, I think, you see, this one is coming closer to breaking even and it doesn't have all the same components.
Okay, so your next budget is Pop Whalen.
Why did you?
That didn't come out very well.
Hey, Beau.
So my Pop Whalen slide did not come out very well for you. The Pop Whalen budget is up $82,315 or 22.2 percent. I would sit here with the utmost confidence and say that Brian has got a very good handle on what it looks like to operate the expenses of this facility. He has also provided you with revenues that balance out to the full budget for the arena. So with that said, I'm going to guess in your book is probably first, the personnel administration, correct?
I think it was.
Hang on, I went right to the POP.
This is one that we were handed, and so I have, see if that, the way it came to us.
My first budget is 45,890.
In the, what has happened in 2024, '25, and proposed '26, it does have the personnel administration number first, but I don't think I have the regular enterprise sheet.
You don't have the enterprise income sheet?
Sheet, the one we usually get that does the personal administration first. We don't have that piece. We start right with the 102.
100 series. I will get those back up for you. And as you mentioned, Linda, this is half of one of Parks and Maintenance employee, maintenance employees is paid for here. 200 series. 300 series. So administrative cost allocation, you're going to get a presentation on that and how that's calculated. I believe it's when Barry's budget is presented to you. So that will be that whole formula and how it was built.
Is that, is that, is that going to help answer, I think you said it would, help you answer the question that I asked last week?
I hope it does.
Okay, good. All right.
So I see concessions expense and outside services moved from 435 and 850.
Concessions expense was never.
In there.
In there at all from the 2023 budget. So you had concession revenue, but you had nothing to put it against for buying anything and stuff like that.
And that includes salaries, too, also?
No.
Doesn't it? Just materials? Materials, including now the pro shop that we now operate, as well as the concession stand.
Okay.
And he's estimating $25,000 in projected revenue compared to that $15,000 expense.
It was handed to us. It was separate.
And what outside services were moved?
All of them that you see listed there?
All of them that were listed, okay. Was the, the extra electricity, is that based on summer operations and opening the rink early this year?
So actually, the electrical should have been, this was, looks like an error, typographical error, should be at $77,252. And that's basically, we're adding, on average, the cost to start opening the rink in August.
Correct.
So it's approximately almost $10,500 to operate electricity-wise with the ice in, and about $1,300 without the ice in.
So did you find that based on that electricity cost this year, did you do enough business to offset that?
So you'll see it tomorrow also, but we did $26,000 in revenue for the seven weeks that we were open early.
That's, that's one side of the equation. He's asking, did it make sense?
Well, so the answer is.
Yes, if we spent $9,000 extra in electricity.
So right now, if I do comparison apples to apples for electricity and propane together, which are the two big utilities, from year to year, we're over $7,000 this year over last year, and we made $26,000 more.
Respectable.
So when a rink's open, you make money. Isn't that an amazing thing?
Is that something you said earlier? I was just checking.
It just makes sense.
So what Brian had spoken to me about earlier today, and what he's requesting the board to consider, is underline 410 to increase that to $77,252.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye. How about 433? That's a best $10,000 increase. Are we getting more towels and blazes?
No. So what's, that's included in there is the Zamboni repairs and tune-ups.
Oh, in the back, okay.
They're telling us our Zamboni has about this year's left in its lifespan.
How many years?
The rest of this year. And then they're saying, the guy who repairs our Zamboni says it probably won't last after that. I have good faith in our Zamboni. We love our Zamboni.
Let's not go there, okay?
I need, I need one more year out of it. So if I have to put in. I need, I need one more year out of it. So if I have to put in three, four thousand extra dollars into it, it will save the town over almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Are we going to see an accrual come in someplace?
We hope not.
Jim, are you going to see something like a capital reserve fund for this thing?
We, we, we tend not to do capital reserves for enterprises.
What does Barry do? He sets money aside.
It's just in the business.
He just takes it out of his business.
It's on his bottom line.
But, but he doesn't have a bottom line. That's the problem.
Correct.
Well, he does if you, if you read the audit page, exhibit nine, but he really doesn't. So how do we handle
Well, I think Brian is actually working rather diligently to find some creative ways to be able to help offset some of these expenses.
It's one of the things I've actually have asked to be put on the agenda for the Friends of POP on Thursday morning's meeting.
I'll see you there.
Be kind. Okay.
Brian's working hard at trying to find a solution-
Thank you.
-that will not impact the rate payer or the taxpayer.
Good.
How much does a new Zamboni cost?
She's leading the witness.
Well, no, I wouldn't know what you're all getting for.
If we get it brand new, which is not recommended.
Okay, one that's recommended.
Recommended is a good used Zamboni. I have a gentleman at the old rink I used to work at who buys two to three of them a year for that facility. Who said he'll help us find a good one and also go electric over propane and-
The Energy Committee's speaking here.
Yep. So, um, we're looking at somewhere around eighty thousand dollars.
And I would reach out to the Energy Committee because you might be able to get some donations for it being electric.
I will look into that.
Well, there you go.
That's, um-
Ah, Brian gets pocketbooked out.
Right, he just got signed up for that too.
What's, what's his, what's his name?
Get going there, Brian.
I'll never forget all what's his name.
Jonathan Hewitt. Jonathan Hewitt, who is now the, the chair. It used to be Nancy Hirschberg.
Anything else on the four hundreds? Five hundred series. Six hundred series.
That's where I had a question again on that propane line.
Yeah, I had that, but you-
That's-
So on this propane line-
Ninety-four percent increase?
So on this propane line, this original budget of the sixteen thousand dollars was set in twenty-twenty-three when they were just guessing how much propane, because the rink didn't open until January of twenty-twenty-three. And because of the default budget, it has never got to get to be increased to where a full season was, was involved.
So, so you look at the, uh, spread between the sixteen and the thirty-one, they were either half right or half wrong.
They were close.
Well, they were, they were, they were right for the half, they were right for the half a season it was open.
Yeah, they weren't even in the zip code.
It was like horseshoes.
Yeah, but unfortunately it was in a business plan.
However, um, there is, again, uh, this is an omission on my part, actually. There's a need to, uh, add a line six-ten here in the amount of four thousand dollars. And that is for, um, the Paint the Ice event, supplies for themed skates, instructors for figure skating and rentals for tag sales, home shows, et cetera. So Brian's requesting that you increase, um, create line six-ten in the amount of four thousand dollars.
Are you going to give us a new sheet with that in here?
Well, I thought you were going to say, Jim, are you going to give us a donation?
So we'll, we'll vote on it? We'll get a new sheet?
So the reason that this line is being added is that I'm now running programs out of the POP to add revenues, but there's never been a program expense line to pay for the things you need to run those programs. So that's the idea of this item, this line item.
I'll make a motion to add four thousand to, uh, this budget and that we receive a whole new budget with all the correct lines.
And a new budget line of six-ten.
So how old is the old Zamboni? Just curious.
We have a motion on the floor. And old, oh-
Yes, six-ten.
Second.
Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, Brian. Sorry.
How old is the Zamboni? Curious.
I've been told, I mean, parts of it have been replaced, but I've been told this thing is over twenty-five years old.
And I would say that's about the life of a Zamboni?
Most Zambonis these days run ten to fifteen years. So-
It's a great machine we have.
Yeah.
That's why he loves it so much.
But again-
It, it only filled us with only two ice makes left at the end of last year.
But again, we're, we're, we're kissing the Blarney Stone here. We, uh, we are, we are a victim, we're a victim here. We, we have stretched the useful life of that asset, assuming you're not telling us a Fibberoni. We've stretched the useful life of that asset well beyond twice its useful life. And that's good, but when it, when it crashes and burns, it's a single point of failure. We got to get eighty grand now. And we just got to get better at planning that stuff out.
I think we definitely need to look at better planning on all this to trying to get the life expectancies of things so we know when they're coming.
I, I, I do have an emergency plan in place already if the Zamboni should fail on us. I've already talked to Brewster Academy.
Oh, they have one, right?
They have one and they are willing to loan it to us if we need it during the hockey season.
Ba-da. Now, now what we're doing is we're going around with the cup. We say, hey, we just spent nine mil, eight, whatever the amount of million is on the rink.
Hold on, let him, let him finish.
And we're passing the cup to get a Zamboni.
Let him finish, kids. I want, I want to hear this.
We've got two point seven million or thirty-eight percent of that rink on donations, so.
So basically, you know, so they, they are on standby for it.
Yeah.
If, if we need it and they almost did, we almost did have to borrow it last March.
Yep.
Because we were about three Zamboni ice makes short of a good time at the end of the season. And all we would need was a truck from Highway to go over and pick it up and bring it over to us, but, you know.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't want to see you driving it down the street.
I would only take it through the drive-through Dunkin' Donuts.
Seven hundred series. Eight hundred series. And I think Brian's got some good news he wants to share with you on this line.
So, uh, line eight fifty is going away completely, uh, of the seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. That is, this room, the, uh, line six-ten replaces that.
The four thousand that Jim plunked in there?
Yeah.
So we net three thousand? Is that roughly the math?
Correct.
Move to reduce line eight fifty to zero?
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
So we got to plus up a three grand on that. And you're going to get us a free Zamboni?
We, we, we plus up three grand there and we lost two thousand on the electricity.
Thanks for keeping me on. We're up a, we're up a grain.
Better up than down.
Nine hundred series.
Yeah, my question on that, and I think I know the answer, that is only the twelve percent of the bond assigned to the POP. It's not-
It's eight percent. I don't know if it's twelve percent.
So I think, I, I may be wrong. I think it's eighty-eight percent of the debt or the POP.
Why don't we get that figure so we're telling the truth?
Yeah, I think I have it.
That's a good idea.
Yes, yes.
So whatever it is, the large tranche of the debt is being held in the general fund. This number here, this is only the debt that's directly assigned to the POP Whalen Enterprise Fund?
Correct.
Thank you.
So can you tell us about our chillers and our pumps? What's, what's the life expectancy and maintenance going forward?
Well, after the money we spent on it this year, um, they're telling us that we should be good for quite a while. You know, usually, I mean, it's going to have maintenance anyway, but should be at least ten years of good running thing. We, we did spend ninety thousand dollars on it this year to refurbish both the six and the, uh, I'm sorry, the, the eight and the twelve cylinder compressors. They seem to be running super well, a little too well, actually. We had to dial them back a little bit. The ice was getting too cold. So, um, we're in good shape now with them and we have a good plan in place with, right now, a good company that seems to be knowing what they're doing.
Did we put a filter on the water line coming in? We were talked about that?
So we bought a filter.
Okay.
We talked to the, the plumber.
Yeah.
He refuses to do it.
Why?
He said because we didn't buy the, the filter from them, that he didn't feel comfortable putting that type of filter on the line. Uh, American Refrigeration did say that they would do it. They just haven't had time to come and do that. We did pay four hundred and fifty-five dollars for a product that is supposed to, um, descale.
Okay.
We put that in at the beginning of the season. Um, it seems to be working very well. We haven't had, uh, very much problem as well as, um, I learned very, a lot about the water, uh, department stuff with, uh, this wet tech company that we use that descales the water in our pump thing. Sat down with him for about three hours one day and he actually gave us more, I don't know what they are, uh, product that goes into our pumps that, uh, descales it without using chemicals. It's an electric current of some sort. So he agreed to add more units to that at no cost to the town. Um, and that seems to be helping also. So right now, um, we seem to be working at a very good, good pace and, I mean, we opened up the warmest week of the year with ninety-eight degrees and our ice temperatures were down to fourteen and fifteen degrees. So, uh, the only problem we seem to be having was our, uh, chiller, uh, our water cooling towers. And we've basically been told that those were put in, the ones that were put in are actually made for places like Louisiana. They're not really made for cold weather places. Um, so we had a little problem with our water getting too, too hot. Um, and we were coming up with creative ways of trying to cool the, uh, the water going into the chillers, but we, we made it all work.
And I think the, the other good news on this is Brian has found that, you know, the provider that we had previously working on the system, did not have the best interest in Wolfboro and the POP Whalen Arena at heart. We terminated that contract, went with a new vendor. New vendors painted a completely different light for the arena, the chillers, the systems, as well as, um, painted a picture that in the future, um, if we so desired to change refrigerants to ammonia, which would be the alternative at this point, um, it would not be a huge lift.
No forklift required, huh?
And it would be a lift, but it wouldn't require changing out tremendous amounts of equipment was the way that he explained it to us.
Are we now opened as much as other rinks in the state or with this extra?
Well, we're equal to Hamm Arena now.
Okay.
Uh, within a week, they opened up a week earlier than we did. We are pretty much the same as Concord. Um, obviously you got Triton that's open, Hookset that's open year round.
And Exeter.
And Exeter that's open year round.
How about the other schools, like the, some of the Prokeel schools and some of those?
So a lot of those don't open until, until late because they don't, they don't try to rent out their ice arenas.
Okay.
They use them for their own schools and prep schools don't usually start till October. This year I was, I convinced Brewster Academy to start in September. So they've been playing, they've been skating with us for the last two weeks now.
Okay.
And stuff. Um, and then they've also increased the number of teams that they're going to have at our arena to, from two to three. So that's another whole team's worth of ice that they're taking up.
Are they taking some morning times?
Yes, their, their boys team has requested six AM ice slots.
There you go.
Which I thank them heavily because of Kingswood Girls scenario, uh, because they have now merged, uh, with a co-op with Plymouth. So those girls can't get here till the afternoon. So now they can't get any ice before five o'clock where they were taking the three o'clock ice slots before.
Is it, is it now Alton, Plymouth and Kingswood?
Yes.
And how many girls are on that team?
They tell me that they've got, they've got about twenty-five girls on the team. Three of them are coming from Plymouth, I know, because I've already talked to the new head coach numerous times on that. Because they're having some transportation questions on how they're going to be.
So three from Plymouth, the rest from Alton and Wolfboro?
Yeah.
So the, so the ninety thousand that we spent, did that go into our bottom line for the, for the rink?
So, so what, what we ended up paying was thirty thousand dollars to the old company. And in my opinion, that was a lot of it we wasted, um, not knowing. The sixty thousand is what we paid the new company for the new compressor. It's going to hurt us this year. There's no, no making it up.
What do you mean it's going to hurt you?
Huh?
What do you mean?
It means I can't make up ninety thousand dollars.
You can't cover it.
I can't cover it.
Okay. Okay.
So it'll, when we get the audit report next year, it's going to say that the POP Whalen Ice Arena on December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five showed a loss for the year of X amount of dollars guaranteed.
So we don't-
Yes.
Same speech, I'll just abbreviate it. How many people are using the facility, you know, utilization, you know the stuff.
Public skate, twenty-six hundred people used it last year.
Utilization, programs, how many times, that kind, you know, how many craft fairs, those kinds of things people out there are going to look at and go, makes sense. My, my initial observation is that you've turned a winter-only operation into an early fall-winter operation. You've kind of, you know, kind of picked up a, a season there. Spring, summer is still a, you know, kind of a, we got to get more-
Well, we've got buy programs already built for the next summer.
Yeah, good. That's a work item in there. And now to Jim's point, and you know, I like all of this stuff, but, Jim, when, when will, could you expect to see a pro forma income statement for this twenty-five enterprise fund?
Upon receipt of the twenty-twenty-five audit.
So the good news, so you won't do one until then?
Okay.
Not even a pro forma?
He'll give you his annual monthly report that you get on a monthly basis.
Maybe I'll build one.
Excuse me?
Maybe I'll just try to build one myself, just out of my fragile mind. The good news is on the recent audit that's a, that, uh, we have, exhibit nine, which is all versions of the truth, it can't be any more truer than this, uh, the POP actually, uh, threw an operating, uh, uh, profit of seventy-nine thousand dollars on revenues of four seventy-five and expenses of three ninety-six. Now, we all know that there's costs somewhere else in the, somewhere else over there, but, uh, take the win. I'd say take the win. So if you, if you got a, how much, Jim, did you say would be a, you can't make up ninety, eighty?
There's about ninety thousand I can't make up. I was anticipating at the end of this year about twenty thousand dollar loss. So I was expecting about a one-ten.
All things being equal, uh, you'll get close. If you just run the math the way you've been doing it, you're going to get close. You just, if you really, I don't know how you get costs down or anything else, but congratulations on what you've done.
This might be a simple question, but it might be a hard question. How many, how much did you take in for revenues ice out this year? Do you know?
Yeah, ice out was three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, give or take fifty bucks.
Yeah.
Compared to the year before, which was seventy-five dollars.
Yep.
I mean, just to give you an idea, well, having a report for tomorrow, but when the seven weeks that we put ice in early,
Yep.
it was twenty-six thousand dollars plus last year, that same seven weeks, revenue was seven hundred and thirteen bucks.
Ice makes money.
Well, and, and people are not traveling to the Hamm to skate. They're here in town and we, the Back Bay Hockey and all those went up into Hamm for their early season. They're here with us.
Yeah.
Prom night. Prom night.
Um, and when you, when you look at the, the projected, uh, revenues that Brian has, um, you will see annually the town appropriates a certain amount of monies to operate the arena. That is leveled to last year, one hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Yep.
As that town purchased ice time.
Yep.
Any other questions about that budget?
Congratulations on what you're doing.
I bet you're glad the budget season is coming to an end.
Never ends.
He never does, he's got, he's got his finger on it all the time.
So we've got, uh, I believe it's three capital LAs to look at. First capital LA under Prox and Rec, request for, uh, cameras on the Bridge Falls path. Uh, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we installed new, uh, light poles. When those new light poles and lighting was installed, it was contemplated to be able to accept cameras. Christine has secured pricing to install cameras. We're still doing a little bit of research because in the warrant or in the Capital Reserve Fund, there's still a balance of about thirty-two thousand dollars left in there. But I, I cannot say with any level of confidence if that is supposed to have been transferred out based on the capital project that was performed or not. Uh, so I gotta have a conversation with Barry to figure that out. If, if that money is still there, I would anticipate this capital, capital, uh, outlay request going away and asking for authorization to use those funds for that purpose. Christine can explain to you the thought process here and how she got to where she's at. Christine?
I took a walk down the path, um, when the lights were installed. I think there were, there was only so many of them that have the capability to harbor, um, something in the base and then the camera up top, so it's all conduit in there. So we went through, I talked to Barry and night security gave us a quote and went through on all the things. This is, um, this is a highly vandalized area that we're constantly having to go down there and clean graffiti up. Um, and when we were doing the Bridge Falls project, the police, uh, contacted Barry and myself to see if when we were doing the project, could we just put conduit in the ground, um, for this future project? And so this is the final piece. Um, we do have cameras down at the Foss Field facility, um, which actually have proven to be helpful in many cases, unfortunately, that we even have those cases. But it's to help protect the assets we have of the town. And so this is one more piece just to help with that. This price could go down a little bit depending on, um, we just have to examine the boxes because I guess some of those lights came with a box that could possibly work with the camera. Um, so we just need to make sure if that does work, then we could cut down what was quoted. But this was to include all of it to make the project work.
Who's gonna, uh, who's gonna be monitoring the cameras?
Uh, these will be tapped into the police station as well.
So these are going to, gonna go on a, on an ethernet connection down to a server and then taken down to PD? PD has dispatched, signed up to do that?
Yes, I've had a conversation with them and it's kinda similar to the cameras over at Foss Field already. It will be piped through the Foss Field Pavilion because we already have a system in there. And then it will, they'll be able to, the police will be able to monitor them.
Okay, your next capital outlay is, uh, for repairs and further evaluation at the Clark Complex. Last year, uh, at the end of twenty twenty-four, we were able to program some monies to have H.L. Turner perform some work at the, uh, Clark Complex. They came back with a scope of work, um, to be able to, um, stabilize, what was it, Christine? I'm sorry, I'm kinda.
Schoolhouse.
The schoolhouse, yeah.
Um, and then to be able to do additional, um, work to the barn, engineering and whatnot. This, this is one that really needs to go forward in, um, twenty twenty-five, whether it's here or whether it's in a warrant article. This is a building that if we don't do this work, uh, in the coming year or two, um, it's going to end up in similar condition to some of our other buildings that we've been talking about fairly regularly. So we've done the engineering, um, let's put thirty thousand dollars to work and let's get another twenty thousand dollars worth of engineering done.
Would that be put out to bid for local companies?
Uh, by our procurement policy, it would be put out to bid.
It's put out to bid.
My one issue here is this is necessary and I think it's an urgent project.
Yeah, I was looking at that.
You know, and my understanding is the schoolhouse has a wall that's in very, very bad shape. And this is how the, you say, well, how did, how did the community center get in the shape? Right here tells you how it gets there. When you look at these other things, these get pushed down the line and they're not as, people don't use them as much. And I think that is why it happens. So to me, this should be changed to urgent. I think we got an issue with a wall on the schoolhouse and we better get this engineered and see if we can make something happen and not let this set of buildings be the same way as the other.
Not to put too fine a point on it, because I saw it necessary too, and I kinda, kinda glanced right over and said, show me the things that, you know, the world will come to an end. So what was your, was it just, what was your thinking as you checked necessary versus urgent? I'm questioning you. Don't take it personal.
I mean, I think everything's urgent, but when I come to the table, it's like something always precedes it. Uh, I mean, it's definitely necessary, it needs to be done. They're still using it, but obviously if we wait, it's gonna get worse.
So on your scale, you, you're necessary and what Linda just said, sounds like it moves it to urgent.
Yes.
Would this be a, um, a building that we could do, um, design and build on? Could we have a, an RFP so that it goes out and whoever is going to bid on it comes back to you with their?
Build schedule.
Builds, well, their structural, they, they, they have, I mean, a lot of these.
I think that's already been done by H.L. Turner. H.L. Turner's gone in, they've evaluated the building, they've kinda given us a scope of work on how to do that. Did I not forward that to the board, uh, in the past?
Yes, it is, it's recommended on the Pleasant, they're looking at, um, a hundred and fifty thousand for the schoolhouse.
Next one, yeah.
Yep.
So.
Schoolhouse is that amount. But that's not what's up here.
The question that I would have is, um, if that's the way you would like us to put it out when we put the RFP out, we can certainly do that.
So I think when you look at this building, you look in one of these pictures that says typical granite block movement observed. If you look at the building above the granite block, you see this line in the ground right there. That's your drip edge. That's your water drilling a hole in the ground. So a lot of this is moisture around your building causing frost, heave, up and down. You're not moving, you're not moving your water out of the area. It's, it's hanging around, splashing up against your building, it's rotting your sills. So this is, so this is kinda like, uh, what I call self-inflicted.
What do you wanna do?
Well, you gotta take care of it. It's, that's, that's, but it's.
This is a historic building, so.
I get it, but this is what I'm saying is this is when you, when you decide to put something in place and you have these areas that aren't typically viewed by your common folk, but when you're in the industry, you can identify this stuff. And this is, this is self-inflicted. This, these little things cause big damage. And so when you, when you have a, uh, small things that you could spend ten thousand dollars on as a town, now what you get is you get a hundred and three thousand dollars instead. So these are, these are, these are things that, this is why I'm sitting here, because I want this town to be a, a better at taking care of their buildings and not just looking at the building, but looking at the grounds and how the water goes around their buildings and, and what it does to their buildings. Because even the Libby Museum, when we did the master plan facilities, we, we saw the parking lot.
All the same stuff.
We saw the, we saw all the same stuff.
All the same stuff.
So.
All the same stuff.
And all the corrective measures on the Libby that we did over the years were not correct measures. Some of them caused more issues than they did solve problems.
Whatever.
I'm, I'm not talking about that, so.
So, so, um, I think, I think you move this to urgent.
Yep.
Okay.
I would ask the board to make that motion.
I'd make a motion that we move the, uh, uh, the Parks and Recreation Capital Outlay for the Clark Museum Complex, uh, dated nine eleven twenty-five from, uh, necessary to urgent.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay?
Thank you.
And I think that you just do it. Uh, I, I, unless somebody thinks it's a bad idea. I think the plan you've laid out says you've got Turner Group telling us what's going on. You have this, this gentleman here telling us this looks like deja vu all over again, not to talk about baseball players. Why would we not wanna do this?
Me, in terms in two thousand twenty-five?
Yes.
Six, I mean.
Six. Seven for the other stuff, six for this.
Oh, yeah.
So it's one of two things. We either put, put it out as a capital outlay or we put it out as a warrant. Isn't that really the decision for us?
Yeah.
Is that really the decision?
Are we saying we wanna put out the, um, Clark House and the Pleasant Valley School as one warrant article to fix the two?
That's a decision for us, right?
I, I'm just asking what you're trying to.
I'm saying that there's an ask here for fifty thousand dollars.
So if I remember correctly, they, they
Fund it.
stated in their, their report that thirty thousand dollars, maybe it was twenty-six, something like that for work.
Construction.
Um, and then they think that they need another twenty.
For A and E, Architecture and Engineering.
Architectural and Engineering of the other building, if I remember correctly.
It's right here.
One, one was the, one was the Clark House.
Yep.
That was the one for the twenty-six, right? And that, and then the other one was for design, but they also gave us a quote to fix it, which was your one hundred and fifty thousand.
I'm responding to, uh, the motion I made was through the document that says Architecture and Engineering twenty, Construction thirty, Total Project Estimate fifty, source of estimates H.L. Turner. I moved it from, we moved it from necessary to urgent. I support doing this.
I was responding to whether you, you wanted to put it out as a warrant article or not.
Oh.
And when you said that, I'm trying to figure out whether you wanna bundle the whole thing by your comment or whether you wanna focus just on the schoolhouse.
Schoolhouse.
Okay, so we would leave the Clark House as a capital project here as urgent? And then the other possibility is to put the Pleasant Valley Schoolhouse repairs out as a warrant article. Okay, gotcha.
Sorry for the confusion.
So, so in the, in the recommendations for the Pleasant Valley Schoolhouse, this is, this is where it comes up short with the water area. And this is a good example right here where you, you get your water, you collect it and then you get it out away from the building. You create infiltration trenches and then you get that water into the ground away from your building so it doesn't end up in the basement. But this is, this, this is what this is missing right here.
Okay.
Yep.
And then pull, and then you're talking about putting some kind of a drainage system underground to get it out?
I'm talking about a barriers, after they do their foundation, you put a barrier in the ground, collect the water, divert it to another area on the grounds, dig your infiltration hole, fill it with stone, pipe that water into that area so it settles into the earth.
And this is gonna be on top of the ground?
Correct.
I, I, I wonder whether they're gonna have some issues because it's supposed to be an historical site.
Well, you won't, you won't see it, basically what you're gonna see is you're gonna see in, in a drip edge, stone area.
That's what I'm trying to get is, and we're not gonna see this round.
No, you're not gonna, you're not gonna see anything.
That was what I was trying to get from you.
No, it's not on top of the ground, no.
If you can't see it, I'm, I think there's, that sounds great.
Okay, so am I hearing that we move forward with this, um, change it to urgent, but there's a conversation that could come forward about a greater warrant article?
That's my understanding.
For the schoolhouse.
For the schoolhouse.
The schoolhouse.
When we look at warrant articles.
Okay. Uh, and then the last one, this is, uh, one that's coming back to you from last year. It was removed at the Budget Committee level, I believe it was removed at the Budget Committee level, or was it in the, just because of the default?
Default budget.
Removed because of the default budget and that is, um, tennis courts, pickleball courts, et cetera, at Foss Field, uh, and Christine can speak to it better than I.
So before you do that, it was not removed by the Budget Committee? We put it in as an outlay and it got pulled down because of the default budget?
Correct.
But we had already said yes.
Yes.
Did we say yes to this number or is it a smaller number?
Smaller.
No, it's smaller because we had, we had originally gotten quotes, but the, the people we got quotes from never came out. This was the one company that came out. We reached out to them again, they would still honor that price.
Roughly speaking, how much smaller was the number?
Uh, like forty thousand.
Yes, because I remember.
The number was gross enough.
It was eighty-two or something, the first one, or eighty-nine, and this one came out to forty-six. And I was just gonna ask, are they gonna still do it for the same price?
We already reached out to them to see.
We've already said yes warrants.
Yeah, and they did Moltenborough?
Yes, I believe they did do.
And we talked to Moltenborough and Moltenborough was happy with the work.
Correct.
Yep.
I remember all this.
So we said yes warrants. Why would, why would we say no?
If we're foolish and we neglect more property and let it fall apart.
Well.
Well, there, there's a comment right there.
One of the things we wanna point out to the public is it was in the eighties, it is now, uh, forty-six is a good price.
So it gets better as the longer we waited. That's a bad argument.
No, no, I'm saying they get to know that by the work that we did, we got it down to forty-six. That's what's there.
And Christine, you got this as an urgent, so we don't have to make motions and all that stuff?
Right, because if it starts to crack, then you're in trouble.
Yeah, we heard last year that if it, if it cracks to a certain degree, it's, it's
We go down to the base.
Yeah, it's a replace, not a repair.
We go back up in price.
So I don't, I think this is a great idea.
It did get painted though this year, didn't it? No?
We pressure washed it.
Okay.
That's what that is. It's the whole resurfacing when they repainted and all that, but because we didn't have a budget pass, it got.
It's a great idea.
So, so what do we do, what do we do to prepare it, uh, going into the winter?
So we just check, um, to see if there are any cracks and we can fill them just to make sure that they don't crack any further. Um, we did that last year, we'll do it again this year to make sure we're good, but we, we have pretty good, it, it looks pretty well taken care of.
I thought it did.
Yeah.
Anything else? Um, that's all the budget. I don't know if there's any public input or not.
So I have one question. Would we want this in a warrant article? Because if we go, I mean, the, the tennis players and the pickleball players are a good group in this community that will support this and they'll get the word out to, to save their courts. And then, I mean, it's not a big lift, it's only forty-six thousand.
So it's a double edged sword.
It's a thought. Yep. No means no.
There's that, but there's also, horrible thing to say, we've gotta defend our budget, but this is in the budget and all of a sudden Christine notices a crack next year and we have to get this thing done. We can actually do something without having to go to town meeting, um, as well, you know, to get the people who play pickleball, basketball, use those courts to support this, support the budget, which we've gotta do a better job at selling it. I, I, I think that's where it lies.
This repair wouldn't be able to be done till warm weather next year anyways, correct? And. And the vote is in March. It's a thought.
I mean, it, I guess it's a conversation you can have when you get to warrant articles, if you want this to be amended as a warrant article, I can draft language, if that's what the board so desires.
Yeah, I think we should think on it.
I think we should think on it. My, my, again, my, just my initial reaction, subject to more thinking, is the no mean no thing takes flexibility out of our hands if we get a no. And I'm always worried about using warrants as a hedging strategy on on our ability to explain our budget. If I personally, if I think we're doing an outstanding job explaining our budget, I'm all in, I'm just saying to the taxpayer, it's in there.
Yeah, and I think we also haven't even taken a look at what warrant articles are coming our way, and how much we want to put in capital reserve accounts. I think we have a lot to think about still.
No, I think, I agree. Not a bad idea to keep that one out there as an option.
Hey, do we have any public input?
Karen?
We're looking at you.
Nope.
Okay. Do we all make a motion adjourned?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thanks, everybody.